Hi, I'm Bill.
That's gonna be a long meeting.
Good morning. It's Monday, September 28th, 2029 a.m. This is the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda.
Look to approve.
I have a motion by Santos, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same? Motion carries. Item number three are items with Mike Nolan of Horizon Architecture. Uh, Mike, are you on the phone this morning?
Just saying I am here, okay?
Okay.
Jeff, 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 Jeff. We need to hear the floor before we get into the phone.
I think that's Nathan, but I can't tell you for sure.
It sounded like Nathan, but if somebody, uh, who, if you're on the, a call in, if you're not speaking, would you please mute your phones? Uh, we get the feedback from your computer. Okay, Mike, you wanna go ahead and try?
Okay, thank you. I think I can, uh, your station. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Uh, first off on the agenda is, I have, that's electronics for the entry access. Um, security cameras, three servers. The server is gonna need that basically across the board if we do our, uh, surveillance. And the current, the cameras are not entirely, they're in the locations that were, I think, it's one of the holes around the website and concrete line. This, this basically the whole cover is on the here of the roof. The access control, we started out, um, just basically doing access for the, uh, evidence area. Eventually after the entire county, any facilities to require access, this is a band that now to cover the accessibility. This is, uh, virtually on my MSF, forces are, burdened contract assault, and that's part of Myers' contract.
Okay, you're, we were breaking up. Bill, do you got, do you have everybody?
I found the person that was doing it.
Okay, perfect.
Did you follow the caller?
No, I thought I did.
No, he didn't.
You, mute Nathan as well.
No, it's not Nathan.
He's not doing it?
It's a couple different callers. It's just caller, you know, whatever number.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we had that, uh, we caught about ninety percent, or I caught about ninety percent of what you said, Mike. It looked like we have a, uh, we had drawings of the, of the system, and this is a product, product by FSS would do, would do the installation. This would be our video security like we have everywhere else and server. Sherry, do you have any?
And, and I think what Mike was saying, and we had trouble hearing, is we're handling this as a contract between us and FSS and not running it through Myers, our contractor.
Okay, so this is not part of the building? This is part of a, just the county doing it directly with the vendor?
And this is the security system, the, the keyless system, which is, at some point, we wanna, we wanna talk about having that throughout the county. They should have card, I do card in, you know, but, but, um, and the security system, new server, cameras outside the building. There used to be cameras there when the building was put up, and they started failing and they replaced it, so.
Do we have a keyless system now at the jail?
Would this be compatible with the one they put in the court?
Well, at the jail, you do on the new pod side, where they have G-Pods or whatever, that they can go through and pass through doors. But they don't on the current, or the old jail portion of it, so.
And DHS, the Community Services Building, DHS has a, has a keyless system.
Is FSS the, the same provider for those services?
Yes.
Not at the jail.
Community Services, yes. I don't know if they did when they put the jail out.
The jail was done as part of the project there, and so I don't know who actually controls that. If that is something that's done through simplex or.
Oscar, do you know?
Uh, it's, uh, there is no contract with that.
It's an accurate controls?
Accurate controls.
Okay.
The reason why I'm asking is if, if, let's say, uh, a jailer is in, you know, or a sheriff is wanting to, or, you know, deputy wants to come in, process somebody, and they're over at the, at the sheriff's office. Do they come down to the jail, does that same badge work?
I would say probably not at this point.
No, and where they were going to process somebody would be in the old jail portion anyway, so there's no key card access there.
Okay.
And this is, is this the same system that we put in the courthouse when we did the access to the new courtroom?
Yes.
So this is, we're getting some consistency around this system and technology?
FSS did, did DHS and the county, the Community Services Director didn't want that for their side of the building. At some point, they probably wanted to do it on both sides.
So it's on the side the state's in, but not on the side that the county employees are in?
Yes, and it's the same system there as the courthouse, and then this will be the same.
And that's really where I'm after. I wanna know, are we being consistent? Can we be making sure that we're trying, you know, trying to avoid utilizing different vendors, and then we come back in and have three different systems?
Well, and we've been working on, you know, in issues budget, we have the jail booking expansion, you know, do we do something like this in that area while we're working on the building?
And I, I seem to recall that in the jail, that some of the hardware interface was a bit unique, 'cause that caused some challenges at one point, did it not? Yeah, okay, so I think the jail's kind of a different animal, I think, in the jail control system.
Later on the agenda, you have the contract with CSS Controls, the $320,000 contract that is to replace some of those controls with the non-re proprietary system. It's the same system we use in our other buildings for controls.
Okay, yeah, I have a lot of questions about, but I see we have Oscar there, so it's good. Okay. Okay, sorry, Mike, Sherry's been talking. I don't know if you've heard her a little bit. Is even, is Mike still with us? Do we have other, other comments or questions on this from Mike?
Just, sorry, yep. No, sorry, can you guys hear me again? I muted myself.
Yeah, Mike, when would we be looking at starting this and then completing it?
Uh, so the coordination, additional coordination with the electrician would happen this week. So they're doing the, installing the electric stripes, preparing for that. Uh, and this would be installed basically as part of the end of the project. So this would be a November, December timeframe to get all this work completed.
Would any of this be affecting your, the current project that we have going down under the sheriff's now?
No, this was anticipated. This is already coordinated. Uh, I'm sorry, I probably cut out on that. A portion of this is under a furnished contract or installed. So this will be, uh, we'll be working in conjunction with Myers to get this installed as part of their project. So a certain portion, the electrician, uh, in Myers, the electrician has in their contract to assist with the installation, and then the other portions is just a matter of FSS getting in and doing their thing.
So they'll, so the electricians under the Myers contract would be pulling wires and putting them in termination points, and then FSS come put the end equipment in and, and do the system shakeout, basically?
Yep, that's correct. We basically had in the Myers contract to pull some wires, junction boxes for the electric strike, terminate that, or at least bring it back to, uh, I think we're going into the server room. And then the rest of the equipment from that point is similar to what they did in the courthouse. FSS will come in and they'll install all the equipment, get everything set up and connected.
Okay.
And, uh, Bill, you, you reviewed some of this software data?
We already have a camera server out there. It's just not large enough to support the extra items that would be brought on, so we'll be replacing that server and putting this in the rack, and so it should be good. And it will allow, hopefully, for future expansion if we didn't wanna add extra cameras and murals out there at that location.
Okay, I'll make my motion to approve. So I have a motion by Santos.
I'll second.
A second by Scott. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries. Uh, projects update. Mike, did you have some updates for us this morning?
Absolutely. So, uh, as we, hopefully got passed along as of last Monday, we have a temporary certificate of occupancy for the maintenance building. Uh, so we are good to go. We got the fire alarm and solid test and checked out with, uh, with fire, Mike Carvin, and we're, we're ready to go there. So we started taking occupancy and moving in, and I know that Oscar's starting to work his way over there here over the next couple of weeks. Uh, the outstanding items, we have the front entry screen and the additional railing. That is, uh, to be, as of what I heard this morning from Swanson, materials will be delivered this week, and final installation will be completed next week. So once we have that railing done, I'll give Mike Ogden the call and get the final certificate of occupancy. Uh, and then there's just a couple of minor cats and dogs we'll continue to punch out with Swanson, but those are the last big items. Uh, so getting close to the end on that one. Any questions on that building?
Are the utilities switched over into our name, or are they still under Swanson?
We have, at this point, uh, the last direction from Sherry was that once we have a final certificate of occupancy, we will switch utilities over, but for the time being, we're keeping that with Swanson. Uh, the idea being that that can be a little incentive for them to get everything racked up.
Okay, true. Okay, any other questions on the maintenance facility? How about the sheriff's office, Mike? Roof, sheriff's office?
The sheriff's office, we, uh, things are proceeding. Uh, we did have a little bit of coordination logistics napoo on Friday with the concrete pour. Uh, we did, I don't know if you've heard about, we did impact the sheriff's operations and the, um, county engineers for a few minutes. Sounds like we got it sorted out fairly straight away. Uh, just basically coordinating on a tight site, getting our, you know, pump truck and our belt truck and our concrete trucks. Uh, we had that going smoothly, so the exterior concrete pour did get, uh, completed on Friday. So the approaches and the, the new drive are installed, so we'll be watching those getting cured here over the next several weeks. Um, a major work we can expect to see this week is this with the mud. They're gonna be doing some cats and dogs cleanup interior today, and then tomorrow you can start to see, uh, full press on the roofing installation. Um, and more or less getting through the rough framing, the roofing insulation for the cold if you get dried in here within the next couple of weeks. Uh, so doing pretty well in that contract. Uh, so far, the weather hasn't impacted us too much, and once we get dried in, we should be in good shape on that. So, um, talked with Levi this morning. Looks like a good week of work ahead of us.
What happened with the concrete?
We had coordinated with the county engineer. The request was not to bring any concrete trucks onto the driveway, uh, just based off of the weight. You know, more or less, we have pump truck showing up. We had a couple of concrete trucks showing up at the same time. One of the drivers had pulled into the driveway, uh, while they're coordinating some of the other items. It just got missed for a few minutes. Once we got that worked out, we worked with the ready mix, and they got it sorted out to pass along to drivers. It just basically was a little coordination communication issue. Uh, I think we got it sorted out by about nine thirty, and everything ran smoothly for the rest of the day beyond that.
Mike, are you, are you still able to come down and look at some of these job sites and visit, or are you coordinating from home still on these jobs?
Uh, no, I think it's weekly site visits, so I'm on site at least once a week for all the projects and more frequently as need be. Uh, so basically during the coordination by phone, we're probably checking in with Levi at least two or three times a week. Uh, but just a site, weekly site visit, check in, uh, at least there, it's been on Tuesdays, it's the weekly site meeting. So we, at least once a week, we're getting in and taking a peek at things.
And we're still doing some drone pictures or something, or updates on those as, as you visit?
That's correct. So if you go to the link that I provided previously, you'll find the weekly site visits and the, uh, and the site visits through phone or log. If you'd like, I can provide those. We can get those put into this. We provide the packet.
Just when there's major updates, I like to see when we're pouring concrete, things like that. Make sure those footings are good, and, and if we're doing any major, um, infrastructures, constructions, I'd like to see some of those, as we're, as I'm not going down and visiting those. But again, if it's bi-weekly, that's fine. If it's monthly, as long as we're seeing some major things like we saw before in the, in the first concretes, um, those are good to see.
Okay, I will do that. So we have major things coming up. I'll pass that along as part of the, uh, the weekly update.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question? How about the, uh, jail roof? Do we have an update on that, Mike? Are we still waiting? They're inspecting them?
We do.
Okay.
Nope, uh, chatted with Chris Mueller this morning. Materials were dropped off Thursday. Uh, they did start on Friday. Did not want it to get too far along, but they are on site today, uh, starting with the upper roof. So the plan is, assuming that the weather holds out, the upper portion of the roof, they hope to have that done within about a week, and then they'll be moving on to the lower portion of the roof. Uh, we anticipated probably about four to six weeks total on that, and that six weeks being the outside. So my suspicion is if we get a nice, good run of weather, they'll move that up pretty quickly.
Watch that.
What else do you have, Mike?
That was it. So that's what we have in process for right now. Uh, we're discussing, just talking with, uh, Sherry and Oscar, sorting out more or less, moving forward, what the best approach is as far as construction oversight and management. Uh, plan is to come back and discuss next week with you on Monday. Once we have ironed out, we, we feel like it's a, a good coordination matrix, uh, talk about the next round of projects. So that's, uh, what's coming up, uh, next Monday.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
Just on the roof again, Mike, for the jail. Are we, are we making sure we're having some sort of a coordination if they start tearing off and they have, you know, tarps available? If there's any exposed roofing material they've already demoed, they've already got all that stuff in their contingency?
Uh, yeah, so the, their basic approach is to not tear off any more than they can replace in a day. So that's what we're doing. They're working systematically through that. Uh, just like anything, you know, the, we will obviously do a temporary weather seal in the evenings if there's a gap there. Uh, usually at the time, the issues will come in if we have a pop-up thunderstorm or something like that. Again, track the weather pretty closely and try and make sure they have a good team. Uh, but we talked about that in our, our pre-construction coordination. They have a good plan for that, and this is fairly typical for a roof. If you go up and take a look over time, you'll probably see a place where the holes, they've torn out partly, and they'll kind of roll that and tie it back in with as close a construction joint as you can get temporarily. But, uh, yes, we do have to introduce the water.
Okay, my last question on that roof. Did they tell you how many individuals they're planning on probably starting that job with? Is it ten, five?
I, I'm sorry, the question on the size?
How many, yeah, what size is the crew?
Uh, I don't know. I can find out for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else, Nathan? You've been quiet. Anything else from Mike this morning?
Uh, you have.
Okay, so hearing no other questions from Mike, we'll move on to item number four. Discussion of possible action to accept agreement for the second year HIPAA compliance services with Carcoch Compliance Solutions, the amount of $12,980. Good morning.
Morning. Let me start up my little presentation here. Okay, so I'm here today to give you an update and talk about, uh, the renewal. So we're gonna start off with, like, call topic, well, topics for today is I have something called news you can use. These are things that, uh, have happened in the state with counties that you should be aware of regarding HIPAA compliance. Then we're gonna talk about the on-demand training and the report that we'll be generating, reporting on an ongoing basis. Our testation materials, because we test to the fact that you are now compliant with regulations, and then we'll talk about the renewal. So Dallas County had a breach. Uh, basically, the breach was by the Iowa Department of Human Services, but they breached, uh, records from Dallas County, about 4,800 people. Uh, there's a silver lining in the fact that it was the, uh, Iowa Department of Human Services that had the breach, because given that they're a, uh, a government employee, the county is not typically liable for the breach. If it had been a private contractor who was a business associate, then the county would have liability for the breach. But what happened was, uh, the records were possibly 4,800 people, uh, with documents related to income, maintenance, social work cases, et cetera. A Castello company came in, uh, and inadvertently emptied document boxes. The documents were supposed to be shredded, threw them in the dumpster. It wasn't discovered until the dumpster had been, uh, emptied. We actually had a client have this happen to them about four years ago. The information that was potentially breached for things of both PPI, personal protected information, uh, names, mailing address, date of birth, those street numbers, those things that could, uh, lead to an identity theft. And then as important, more important, medical information, Medicaid, mental health information, substance abuse information, living rights, et cetera.
So this breach was, was physical documents?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the reasons we wanna talk about this is because most people think about breaches as being technical.
Yep.
And the vast majority of the breaches, over ninety percent are people in processes like this. Now, the large breaches are all technology, 'cause once you get in someone's system, you're getting access to literally tens of thousands of records. So those breaches are larger. But what we need to worry about are the breaches such as this that are people in processes. Okay, uh, the regulatory agencies have determined or have, uh, issued guidance that says that virtually every breach that occurs is inadequate training. And that's essentially what happened here, the individuals who emptied the trash and been trained on, on what you do with paper records. And so we wanna make sure, and get them this later, that we're doing sufficient training to make sure that, uh, these kinds of breaches don't occur. So here's another breach that we had happen. This was in 2019, or 2017, excuse me. Uh, Worth County had individuals going out and impersonating public health officials. Uh, we're trying to sell, uh, services and equipment, and in one case, uh, some opioids were stolen from a home. Now, the fact that people are going out and doing this is not the breach. The breach would have been, or is, if the information were obtained from, uh, Department of Public Health. Uh, some of these were targeted, uh, visits to individuals. We believe that's probably the case. The only evidence we have is another, uh, this actually was one of our clients. Before they became our client, Sir Gordo had the same thing happen there. So someone is going out, finding information, we believe, on individuals, and they're going out impersonating public health individuals to get access to records, to steal opioids and other drugs from a home, uh, et cetera. So we wanna make sure that we're protecting ourselves, protecting those records. So another thing we wanna point out is typically when we talk to our, to counties, the issue and discussion comes about, who needs to worry about HIPAA? And a long ago, we've been able to say, well, secondary roads aside, aside from any medical information for employees, we typically don't have to worry about HIPAA because they don't use the information. And then one of our clients got this letter, uh, it was from the University Children's Hospital. We redacted the relevant information. But basically, uh, the issue is having access and keeping roads open in adverse conditions. Uh, the individual named here can be potentially medically unstable. And so the letter was sent to make sure that the road be open, particularly if a, uh, phone call was made from, uh, the individual to secondary roads. The point here is only that, in fact, here's an example, where secondary roads would be handling protected health information. And so they do need to have some level of training and need to be complying, uh, with the regulations. Okay, next one. We had a client who, uh, an individual in the county filed a complaint against them. And this is a complaint for, uh, the belief that there is inadequate, uh, uh, security against paper records. This letter is what we hope to achieve whenever an investigation is, uh, begun on one of our clients. The regulatory agencies aren't gonna let you walk with nothing. This is the slap on the wrist that we're looking to get. So you get a letter that says, in this case, a complaint was filed, uh, what the complaint was about. You can see, county does not lock while it left members of the public alone. They build it with protected health information. It talks about why the re, why the regulations fall under this regulatory agency, uh, what the, uh, complaint potentially, uh, breach would be if there was one. Uh, this paragraph, the last paragraph is what I wanna see. Uh, OCR has determined, after asking for some documentation, that this is gonna be handled formally and provide what they call technical assistance, which is what this letter says. Beware, this happened, let's not make, make sure it doesn't happen again. Maybe train your people, et cetera. No fines or penalties, which is what we're looking to have occur when investigation occurs. The only negative to this is now the county has a target on their back for six months. So if another complaint is filed in six months, or another breach is reported, in six months, the regulatory agency will spend more time doing an investigation. But after six months, that rolls away. So that's essentially the slap on the wrist. That's the outcome that we're doing all this work to make sure we have when we have a breach or a complaint or an incident that's reported to the, uh, the regulatory agency. In this case, it was OCR, Office for Civil Rights, but it could be other regulatory agencies such as, uh, Federal Trade Commission, et cetera, or even to the state. Okay, any questions on that?
So when they have things like that, are those coming out of just audits? Or how is it that those complaints or those findings come, come to where they're an actual violation?
Sure, every citizen has the right to file complaints with the regulatory agencies.
Okay.
There are portals online where they just go in, they file the complaint, they can actually file it anonymously. Uh, the most likely situation you're gonna have in terms of having to address something with a regulatory agency won't be an audit. But by then, the moment, the audit program right now is not terribly robust. It'll come from a complaint being filed either by an external, you know, citizen or an internal employee, or you have a security incident that rises to the level of a breach, and you have an obligation, so.
But you, you gave the example that there was a bunch of, of papers that were thrown away in, in the dumpster that had information, that that ended up becoming a finding. How was that, how was that identified?
So that's, uh, ro, gross to the level of being a breach. And so Human Health Services has an obligation to report that. So you have an obligation to self-report.
Okay.
You don't self-report, and you get found out, you know, you're on the wrong side of the line, and you're not gonna get just that.
Okay, so that's self-reporting in that sense, okay.
That's the most likely, as I say, the two most likely are the self-reporting and/or someone. So on-demand training, we're getting ready to start that now that we have the policy and procedure manual in place. Uh, on a frequent basis, it's just an example, this is not you. You will get this report that shows all the trainings that have been assigned, a number of users assigned to that training. training, the number and percent of individuals who have started the training, number and percent of individuals in progress, and the percent, the number of individuals that have completed the training. The number in the lower right-hand corner is the one we want to drill down on. This one is thirty point one percent. Not a very good number. You want it to be around eighty percent. That's when we don't lose sleep at night. This report, what you'll do is you will get a link that you can run at any time. These reports are updated on a weekly basis. There's drill-down functions so you can see by department who is doing the training, who isn't. We break trainees up into two groups. One, we call essential users. Those are managers and folks that actually work with protected health information and protected personal information. And what we call occasional users, those individuals who don't work with the information, but the regulations require they get some level of training. So they get a lesser version of the training because they don't need what the essential users need. So you can drill down by that. You can drill down by timeframe. You can drill down by course. You can drill down, as I said, by department. You can see individually who started the training, who's completed the training. So it's a very robust report that you have access to all the time. And so obviously have a copy of that link and we can provide that to any supervisors who are interested in track this. I will say that our most successful clients are those where at least one supervisor takes on the role of overseeing or looking at the training. Because training compliance starts from the top down. Everything about what we do starts from the top down. So we would request that, you think about one of you folks that actually will actively participate in this training because it's the number one thing you're going to be able to do to make sure that when you have a breach, when you're investigated for whatever reason, that you successfully survive without fines or penalties. Fines and penalties now start at fifty thousand dollars. You go up to a hundred or one point five million, one point, excuse me, or two million per year per incident. So there's enormous economic incentive to make sure we can survive these breaches. And this will be the number one way that we are able to survive. To make sure, so the training is all designed to be online. Everybody gets an email, has a link, they log in, they do their own training. We'll actually train everybody on how to do that. But additionally, as a secondary way to encourage people to come to training, we actually do online training where we run a training online, kind of like a Zoom meeting. That way, people, every once in a while, we have folks that have a problem with their computers getting the training up and running. And this alleviates that excuse because every month, we spend two days, so four trainings, they can come to and get their training department filled. For departments such as secondary roads, typically they'll come to some kind of group training. We train everybody in a group because they don't sit, you know, day in, day out of computer. That way you can get them all trained, there's the coming, bring services or things like ocean and whatnot. So we can do our training the same way. These are the ways we get the training up. If we're still not getting the numbers we need, we'll actually come in and schedule a day's worth of face-to-face training, so two or three sessions. We bring people into a room and we go ahead and do the training. There's no initial charge, you know, for that. Everything we do is fixed fee. The only initial charge would be the travel. No time on the travel, just the cost of the trip. So we have three ways to get the training accomplished. The online training where they do it themselves. These group trainees are done online, they're coming in and doing face-to-face trainings. Okay. So the attestation material, so you're now compliant with the regulations. So what we have delivered to you is the certificate of attestation. It's just the documentation that says you in fact have complied with the regulations. You can use this certificate as you want. We also provide the seal down here in the corner. You can use any materials, put it on your website, show the world that you've complied with what's required under HIPAA. It's good for a year. We date it as the last day of the current project. So if you decide not to renew with us, you still have a year's worth of compliance under your belt. So we provide you with that.
This training and certificate that you give, is that required by all employees?
I'm sorry?
Is that required for all employees? Are you encouraging that for every employee?
The regulations stipulate that every employee in the county needs to have some level of training, which is why we have, as I said, the occasional and the essential. So the occasional is someone like a truck driver who's going to get trained, basically says, see something, say something. Because they may walk into an office, see information on someone's desk, and that needs to be reported. Or in the case of, we had one client who didn't shred their documents, threw them in garbage bags, were taking them out to the dump, going through town, they hit a pothole. The garbage bags flew out of the back of the pickup, burst open, and we had medical records all over Main Street. So those are the kinds of things they get training on. It's what you do if you see something you shouldn't see. You report it. Help me handle those.
Okay.
Okay, the second thing that we present you with is this letter of compliance. And basically, it says that you have complied with all the requirements of HIPAA. What the regulations are, we talked about, the many process we use. And then it brings up all the different regulations that we have reviewed, which are required under the HIPAA regulations, to make sure that you address those, plus some additional areas. But challenges with HIPAA is this regulation. It doesn't necessarily stay up to date, so as time goes on, we add additional items that we review that are not part of the regulation that you can call out on. So again, this is dated as of the last day of the engagement, and so it's good for a year. And this works well if someone asks you to demonstrate your compliance. It gives you a document that you can provide them with, having to go through the written roll, answering a survey question they might give you that is like twenty, thirty pages long. So in some cases, it alleviates the issue of having to file these surveys. So our renewal date was September twenty-fourth. The cost is twelve thousand and change. Let me pull up the agreements. So the agreement essentially goes through what we have done for you this year. We talked about what we're going to do next year, which will be launching on-demand training, identifying business associates and vetting for you. As I said, in the very first breach, the fact that it was governmental agency means it's not a business associate. If it had been a private entity that was providing services to you, they'd be business associates. You, as the covered entity, as the county, will be held liable for breaches your business associate's cause. The only affirmative defense is to vet those business associates for their compliance with the regulations, and that's something we do for you. Regulations actually stipulate that if you find a business associate who's not complying with the regulations, you need to terminate your agreement with them, contract. There's a caveat, is it possible? Which means that if you can make a compelling argument as to why their services can't be duplicated, you can continue to use them. But that's a tough argument to make, so we would guide you through that. We conduct the risk assessment, the review and mediation plan. We also would update those. We also start through the internal management audit process. What that means is protect the policies and procedures that Nancy and all have spent the last year working on with us. Make sure that you're actually operating the way the policies are written. And go back and audit each of the departments to make sure they're complying with the policies, update them, or modify them, or write alternate policies for that department as necessary. So now that we have a line in the sand, we can begin to look at each of the departments and make sure they're complying the way they need to comply. The cost of the program, that's going to be fine. And that's because after the first year, you know, it's more of a checkup. We don't have all the work that we need to do on the front end, so it's like going to the dentist. First time you go, they take all these x-rays and all these things. We go back, they do a review, and then you do a cleaning. So we don't bill for the work that we don't have to do, so the price has gone down. Also, because you're part of the Behavioral Health Region, is one of our clients, we actually give you a credit voucher, four hundred and twenty dollars to bill against travel expenses because we don't want to be billing for information or work we've been doing on behalf of the region that overlaps all we have under the county. That is agreements. So that's our presentation. Any questions? You should all have a copy of the agreement.
Very informative. I'll make a motion to approve the new contract as proposed.
So I have a motion by Santos.
I'll second.
Second by Scott. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Well, we thank you for your continued confidence in us and for working in the group for another year.
Okay.
And by the way, we'll do quarter, at your discretion, quarterly updates as to where we are in all these things.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number five, or item with the county engineer Keith White. Item five A is discussion of possible action to approve various utility permits. Keith?
Good morning.
Good morning, Keith.
We have two utility permits today. The first is from Eastern Iowa REC, Wilton, Iowa. And they are wanting to bore primary beneath New Era, roughly eight hundred and fifty feet west of Tucker, for a new service to a new shed. No nine-one-one address yet. The second is from Windstream Iowa Communications of Little Rock, Arkansas. And they're wanting to bore across Ocean Avenue and place a twenty-five pair of copper telephone cable along the south side of Washington Street from Ocean Avenue to Sixth Street. So that's essentially Moscow. I recognize those streets. Those are both actually really small projects.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Santos and a second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Projects update, Keith?
This past week, we poured essentially all the west side of our building parking lot. And so this week, they'll be working on the entrance off of Park Avenue, coming in that I would not guess that they would be ready to pave again this week, but we'll see, they Down on G twenty-eight, last week, Peterson placed the subdrains and the McAdam base from Burlington Road to the Pete Moss plant. And they would still have to place the modified to get that ready for higher to trim. And with the weather, I don't think they'll be paving this week. And if they do, it'd be late in the week here before they pave again down there. And then our pavement markings, Iowa plane signing showed up Saturday and started painting pavement markings. I think they have a completion date, I think in a few days, which they are going to make. That's kind of it on projects.
Do you have anything else this morning, Keith?
I do not.
Keith, anybody have anything for Keith? Thank you, Keith. Okay, I'm trying to check and see if Nathan's sending me any notes. Need anything? So if I miss something, Nathan, speak up, okay? Item six is items with the Community Services Director, Felicia Topper. Item six A is discussion of possible action to adopt a revised General Assistance Guidelines Manual. Good morning, Felicia.
Good morning. We've had about a year to look at the General Assistance Guidelines, and we've spent the last probably three or four months really looking at it from a different lens. And that lens is of case coordination. And I think I talked to you about this earlier, is really looking at what people need and getting them to the resources that they need. So this update on the manual has a lot to do with that particular mindset. So the case coordination piece of that is, is being able to look at, when people come in and say, I need rent money, is really looking at what do they really need? Do they need rent money? Do they need utilities? What else do they need? Do they need budgeting? Do they need a referral for Iowa workforce? What do they need? And doing, and looking at that whole person to try to get them stabilized. And so the manual was relatively outdated. And if you remember, Medicaid has been expanded, and that's been in place for several years. And in the past, we paid for medical, we paid for dental, and we have a dental clinic right across the street at MCSA that deals with adults and children. So that's no longer a need that we have in the community. We can actually make a referral for them to be able to go get some of those things done. We also have community healthcare in the community. And so people are able to go get medical help through CHC on a sliding fee scale. And we also do a lot of referring to DHS for Medicaid and food assistance and even cash assistance for that matter. So as we're going through this, I'm just going to clip the highlights of what we are proposing to be changed. Are there any questions? Right this minute. Okay. So if we go to page three, as I said, we removed dental medications, hospitalizations, medical transports, and basic telephone. We don't do that anymore and haven't done it for a very long time. And mostly because of the Medicaid expansion, that's part of it. And Medicaid goes back, so it has a retroactive sort of process. And the medical transport, if you're a Medicaid patient, one of the expand services is actually non-medical transport. So they can get rides to appointments and back and forth. They need to give them a couple of days' notice, but for the most part, they can get to appointments if they need them. So what we did is we left shelter excluding rent deposits because the other part of this is, is making sure that the folks that we're dealing with have actually been here for thirty days, as opposed to people moving from Burlington up to here and say, I need a rent deposit and I need the first month's rent. And we're actually relocating people. That we can't do. I mean, financially, we couldn't do it for any length of period of time. We have the emergency food voucher, which you've, we've already talked about earlier this year. The non-food voucher, we're not using very much at the moment because there is a lot of COVID funds out there. And Salvation Army has a non-food program that we help people sign up for, that they can get all of those paper towels and toilet paper, cleaning supplies and masks and that sort of thing delivered to their home. Or they can go pick them up on certain days and times. So we haven't used. So we haven't used that a lot, but it's still there. So utilities, excluding deposits, and emergency transportation, and those are folks that are transient. Those are the folks that wind up here. An example is, we had a gentleman who was at our jail. And he was arrested here and spent seventy days here. And then the Sheriff's Department took him over to the shelter. And at that point, he was not a Muscatine resident for all intents and purposes, but he needed to be able to get back to Cedar Rapids. So we gave him a bus ticket back to Cedar Rapids so he could get reestablished in his own home community. So as opposed to reestablishing him here, where he had no supports for that. We also changed in this manual, we've been dealing with cremations for a very long time as opposed to embalming and burials. We still have the burial piece, but we're paying for cremations for folks that are indigent. So any questions about that? So far, so good. Okay. Let's go to page four. And we're down on residency. And that's the piece that is slightly different. And it says, people have to be here a consecutive thirty days in a fixed address. And what we've had recently, in the last six months, is people saying, well, I want to move to Muscatine from here. Do you have a job here? No. I can get on Section Eight here. I can't, I'm on a waiting list everywhere else. So I can come and get Section Eight housing. And so we need to nip that to some degree. I mean, we need to make sure that our Muscatine County residents are able to get those Section Eight vouchers and that we're actually getting them to the residents that need them in our own community first. So as opposed to coming from Illinois, where the Section Eight waiting list in Chicago can be ten years, moving here just to get a Section Eight voucher and then going back with a Section Eight voucher to Chicago, or Burlington, or Des Moines, or wherever that might be. So we put that into this particular section. And the other side of that is being able to talk to people about what's their intention. Because sometimes people move here because they have a job here. And they don't have the money to do what they need to do. But they still have to provide, have to have some kind of grounding here in order for us to go ahead and pay rent and utilities and all those kinds of things for them. Generally speaking, folks that are moving for employment have planned it out, generally speaking. They may not have all the money, but they've got a pretty good chunk of change of it. They may not have expected the rent amounts that we have here in Muscatine, but they have planned for it. So that's why we put that in there. Any questions about that? Okay. So then we're going to go to page five, and transients. The other thing we've gotten a lot of is people showing up at shelter and, I want to go to Florida. I want to go to Arizona. I want to go here or there. Well, what's there? Well, I just want to go there. It's got nicer weather there. That sort of thing. And I said, you know, that's not, moving somebody from this community to Florida, nine times out of ten, they come back because we just officially gave them a vacation. And we had a gentleman who needed to go back to Southern Illinois because he had a probation meeting that he had to be at. And we gave him the bus ticket. And when they, when they, we give people a bus ticket, they sign off that they're not going to be requesting any more county funds out of community services. Period. And so he signed off on that, and inside of a week, he was back in Muscatine. And he came over and he said, I need food assistance. And I said, you just signed up on this agreement a week ago. You wanted to go back to Southern Illinois where you have family and you needed to see your probation officer. Well, I saw him and I want to come back here. And I said, no, you signed off on the agreement. So what we've put in here is about returning to family so that people have those supports wherever they're going back to. Because chances are, if there's family there, then there's more stability there and less likelihood that they're just going to go take a vacation and then come back. So that's why that was put in there. The other thing that I want to highlight is one of the things that we're enforcing. It's always been in the manual, but it has not been enforced. And that's applicants must apply for all public and private assistance programs for which they may be eligible before receiving county funding. An example. A person comes in and says, I need a food voucher. And the first question that comes out of Dylan's mouth is, are you on food assistance? And they usually say, no. And we say, you have to go apply for food assistance with DHS. If you're refused food assistance, then we have a different conversation to have. And oh, by the way, here's where all the food pantries are in the days they're open. And here are the ways that you can get to meal sites within the community. Because in terms of being shortage of food places, we don't have that right now. So we get people to where they need to go. The other thing that is here is for those folks that are getting a social security to be able to repay the county. If we've, if they've applied for social security disability or SSI, it's always been in the general assistance manual to have those folks sign an agreement to repay once they get their social security. Most folks get a lump sum amount at some point in the process. So if, and that's true with community organizations as well. So if we've, as a group, we have a group that meets, if we've given folks rental assistance from the housing cluster, from the almanac, and from community services, then our expectation is, is that when they get that lump sum amount, they pay that back to the county and not just blow it on other.
Felicia, that's, that's for that waiting period that it takes. And in SSDI, for example, will go retroactive to the day of the disability, correct?
Absolutely.
And so you're talking about the, the bridge financing, I'll say, that the county has provided, then you're asking, requesting that these groups so that we can continue to do that for people?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I read that, and I was a little bit confused, but so I appreciate that.
And that's after we get them hooked up to everything else.
Right.
Because as an applicant for SSI, chances are they meet all the criteria for food assistance, for medical assistance, and possibly for utility assistance through the Light Heat Program at Community Action. And if it's a housing issue, we always have the shelter as one of those spots. And we work very closely with MCSA in terms of how we go about getting people rehoused. So if a person goes to the shelter, they have federal funds that they can use to get people rehoused right away. And some of those programs pay the rent for up to a year. So it may not require county funds, it just may require that case coordination to make sure that case gets to that housing group to really take a look at. So, any questions about that?
So how would we, you know, you, you mentioned that that was always like an assumption or something that, that we would do, but now we're actually having an agreement for them to reimburse. So hypothetically, let's say a participant, you know, gets eight hundred dollars in, in county funds. They get approved for SSI. Do we have a way of having them reimbursed through some sort of a contract other than just an agreement? Or are we, are they going to say, okay, we're going to get a portion of their check because we control their money? How do we, how are we going to get these funds?
There's two ways to go about that. If we are designated as payee for that person, then the agreement is signed regardless of if we're payee or not. And at that point, if the person, if we're not payee, then we have very little control over it. However, if they do have a payee, then we can always invoice the payee for that amount of money. And that's not something we've done. We can also say, you haven't paid us back, so we're not helping at this point. We're done. The other side of it is, if we are payee, then we can make sure that the person, whatever their amount is, let's assume that for a minute they get twenty-four hundred dollars, that that agreement is on file and that eight hundred dollars comes out of that back pay of twenty-four hundred. Absolutely. And in general, we don't provide county assistance to those folks that we are a payee and guardian for. If we have, if we have control of the money, then we should be budgeting in such a way that that person is able to manage. Or we have them hooked up to programs that can assist with expending that money, or extending that money so that they can live. Does that make sense?
I, it, we've never done this, though, correct?
Well, we've always had an, they call it IAR agreement. But in general, I don't know that there's been any vouchering or anything like that to other payees or to the individual or anything like that. I have found no evidence of that.
Felicia, can we just go back? I've been thinking about this when we were talking about your Section Eight. Then you talked about, you gave the example of a, an individual from Chicago possibly coming and applying for a Section Eight voucher. And then going back to Chicago, does that mean that once they get a Section Eight in someplace in the country that they move farther up the line, wherever they want to go? Is that what that means?
Yes, it's transferable. It's transferable anywhere in the nation.
So how do we have, how do we have it that, that, that we have openings available that we don't have residents already utilizing? Or is it, would, just give me an example, if you would, please.
Jody will tell you that they just recently did a very large poll, poll of the folks that were on the waiting list. And I, don't quote me the number, but it was over a hundred. And so those were Muscatine County folks that they gave the vouchers to. And I know in one particular case, that person's leaving with that voucher. But we tried, that's kind of what the purpose to this is, is to say, you have to be here thirty days. You have to have an intent to stay here. It's not just an intent to get a Section Eight voucher and go wherever you're going to go. Because for all intents and purposes, they could go from Muscatine with a Section Eight voucher and go straight to Florida. And they could come from any other state that has an exceptionally long waiting list, like Illinois. And there are other states that have exceptionally long waiting lists with Section Eight and come here to get one much quicker. They could probably get a Section Eight voucher here within a six-month period of time.
And that, and you know, I, I, just thinking through that, it's, it's all about capacity, right? It's about housing capacity in the area they're trying to be in. And that's troublesome for the recipient state as well. For example, if folks go back to Illinois, the reason they have a ten-year waiting list is this, this process is kind of messed up because they don't really know what their true demand is. If you're, if Iowa's issuing a Section Eight voucher, then they have no idea the demands on their capacity. That could be real problematic, as I see it.
Yeah, it's very true.
So we need to understand what is our Section Eight need in Muscatine County to take care of our residents without this noise from other communities. Very interesting.
Well, I think too that we work really hard with our landlords that take Section Eight and work really hard to help them be able to maintain and to continue to be Section Eight landlords. You know, so that we're not just trying to dump people on them that are not going to stay or not going to be respectful of the, of the property and those kinds of things. So when we do those placements, usually through MCSA, we've got a housing navigator that's connected with them. And in which case, they're checking up on how they're doing and making sure they're getting where they need to go in terms of jobs and able to meet their basic needs and that sort of thing. And that's very different than it is in virtually any other community. And that's one of the things that we pay for, is that housing navigator to make sure people are able to remain stable and not just bouncing around and leaving landlords high and dry and doing some of those kinds of things. All right. We also updated so that we allow for email applications. We allow for the Dropbox, people to drop the applications in the Dropbox. And we changed the processing from five days to seven business days because we're looking at a lot more data than we've ever looked at before. It isn't just as simple as they fill out the application. We're actually getting documentation and those kinds of things from the utility companies, from landlords, and those kinds of things to really get a full picture of how that person is doing. So page eight, we talked about the burial. And there was also another piece into this that talked about whether or not a person was disabled. And it gave us the right to have a person go to an occupational therapist to determine their disability. That is a huge expense for the county that I don't think is necessary. It's really not necessary. If we use medical documentation that the person has, and we can review that medical documentation, and if they've applied for SSI and SSI says they're disabled, then we have all the documentation we need. We shouldn't have to do an occupational therapist and Nancy refer us to an occupational therapist that could cost us fifteen hundred dollars because we question the disability. It's not, the, the cost is not worth it at that point for the amount of money that we could possibly give somebody who may not have a disability.
And they, they could evoke rehab through the employment system, could take care of all their needs.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good.
We also added allowable expenses. We also added the internet to that. And we had a lot of discussion about that. And the staff was kind of like, no, they don't need the internet. And I said, yes, they do. And here was our thought process, where we all came to by consensus, is that we get people who are doing job applications on the internet. They're not walking into the stores and they're not filling out a paper application. It's all online. So they have to have access to that. We've got kids in the home and they're trying to do schoolwork. And I know that the schools are amping up their ability to get Wi-Fi to kids, but that doesn't help their parents in terms of being able to figure out what's going on for jobs and what's going on with their bills. You've got a lot of folks that have smartphones and they're paying their bills online and doing some of those kinds of things. And so they don't need an internet package that's way up here. That's not what we're allowing for. And you notice we didn't have cable TV in there. But internet, I think, is a real basic allowable expense that we need to consider as we're looking at where people are and how we can get them back activated in the job market and in the community. So we added that piece of it. So we can go on to page nine. And here's a difference in what we had for allowable expenses. And what allowable expenses are, is we take the person's income and we give them credit, financial credit for things that they have in their home. An example is, if you, if you were a three-year-old to an adult in a home, then you were only given allowance for thirty-five dollars. We upped it to fifty. Three-year-olds are not tremendously less expensive than a two-year-old. I mean, for all intents and purposes. School-aged kids, I, my personal experience, the bigger they get, the more expensive they get. So we changed that. The household consisting of six, if you look at the example, that second adult is fifty, child two is fifty, child three, child four, and it totals up to three hundred dollars, which is an increase overall from two hundred and forty dollars. So it's a sixty-dollar increase. And this hasn't been increased in, I, I went as far back as I could in 2010, and that's as far back as I could find, and that's the first time it's ever been raised. We added on page nine, number nine, the applicant has a known history of misrepresentation. And we added that. And it was kind of there. When you go to page ten, it talks about first offense, second offense, third offense. And what we've had is folks that come in. And this one says, they don't live with, Sue doesn't live with Janet. And then we come to find out, they do live in the same household. They want to get separate benefits for each one of them. And we deal with households. And so if they're significantly misrepresenting and they stick with it, because sometimes what happens is we bring them both in at the same time and say, okay, what's going on? How did we miss this? And so if we get a fair shake out of them, we proceed. If they blatantly keep saying that they're not in the same household, then we're not going to help. And this, the first offense is, we brought it up from thirty to ninety days, sixty to a hundred and eighty, and ninety to three hundred and sixty-five. And this says that we can refer them to the county attorney's office. I haven't talked to Jim to find out what he wants to do with that, but nothing like, put you on the spot, right, Jim?
There is a provision for theft of public services, so.
Okay, well, good to know. But that will help people. But that will help people, I think, to really get a handle that it's really important to be honest. And we're going to help them out any way we can. It's not like we're going to say, we're not going to help your household to move forward. Because we are, that's our whole purpose, is moving that whole household forward, no matter who's in it. Um, the next thing is, is food assistance. Um, you have already seen this. You've already seen the increases in the food assistance and you did that back, um, later last year. So, um, you also saw the food vouchers, what was going into the food vouchers. All of those items are, um, things that they can't necessarily get at a food pantry. So they're in addition to meat, milk, eggs, that sort of thing. Any questions so far? No? Okay. On page eleven, shelter. We paid fifty dollars, period. No matter how big the household, fifty dollars toward people's rent. Now, fifty dollars, if you talk to any landlord in the city or in the county, they're going to say, I'm not keeping them for fifty dollars. You're not that inhabitant. So, we looked at it and, um, we increased the single person to a hundred dollars. A little bit more incentive for the landlord to give the person some time to figure it out. And then a couple, a hundred and fifty, and a family, two hundred. So we actually tiered the households. Um, as opposed to it's fifty dollars a household, that's it. Because we weren't, we weren't going to be able to keep anybody in their house for fifty dollars. So that's why we increased it. Um, we increased utility assistance from fifty to a hundred. Most people, when they need, uh, assistance with their utility bills, it's going to be way more than fifty dollars. And even, even M P W said, fifty dollars, we're not even going to talk to you. We're going to shut it off. So we raised that to a hundred. But again, it goes back to with the rental assistance and the utility assistance, utilizing all those, um, state and federal programs that are out there first. Not last, first. And if we need to add a little bit to that, we can add a little bit to that. So I don't think that we're going to have anybody racing to the door for the increase in the rental and utility assistance.
Don't some of the utility companies have their own programs?
They do, and we refer to them first. Um, M P W, um, works through Community Action. And, um, people donate from their bills. I think you've probably seen them when you got them. Um, you can donate money to that particular program for folks that don't have it. Um, one of the things that we've also seen is a lot of folks who have not paid their utilities during the moratorium at all, and they have not paid their rent through the entire moratorium. And so they're coming in with thirty-six hundred dollar rent bills, back bills. And they're coming in with twenty-four hundred dollars worth of utilities. So, um, these are folks that are in some pretty significant trouble with regard to that. And I don't think, uh, there's absolutely nothing in this community that we have that can pay all of that back rent and all those back utilities. It's just not even possible. When you think about having to pay back rent and back utilities for an individual who hasn't paid a single dime to their rent or their utilities for the entire moratorium, you're talking six thousand dollars for one household just to keep them in the place. So, it's, it's, it's been quite a challenge. Um, and I'm sure that COVID, that's really been the after effect to that. Is folks losing their jobs and then, um, they get their unemployment from COVID and then they're not spending any money on their housing or the utilities because there's a moratorium. You can't shut me off. But then when the moratorium ends and you can shut me off, it's like, oh, my God, now what do we do? So, and again.
I'm just curious on, on how they had that figured that that was going to work. I would love to hear their strategy on that.
Well, some have said, we, that's why we're coming to you. Cause you're going to fix it. Um, some have said it was everything we could do to survive on what we had. And we just didn't have enough money to pay the rent and the utilities. And the question is, how come you didn't put a hundred dollars on rent and fifty bucks on your utilities? And do what you could do. And it's just, poverty has its own mindset. And it's here and now and today. And so thinking six months down the road is tough for folks who have lived in poverty for an extended period of time. They get to that just today, sort of thing. What do I need today? What do I need to do today? And then not worrying about that six months down the road.
Yeah, cause in reality, if they were unemployed for COVID, there was a significant, uh, benefit for unemployed that they'd had cash in their pocket that they probably never had when they were working.
Absolutely.
You'd had normal unemployment plus the, what it was a thousand-dollar kicker. So, I mean, somebody, let's just say, making fifteen dollars an hour on, on an average work week was taking home probably twice what they were used to, uh, in pre-times. And, and, but again, as you say, probably the discipline to budget and to think is probably, it was cash in hand. It's a tough, tough situation.
And if one spouse is not off because of COVID and one is off because of COVID and they were used to two incomes, that becomes problematic in and of itself too. So, um, we've been working with those folks with M C S A, the housing cluster, and, um, getting them resituated. Um, in some cases, it means walking away. We're also working on the possibility of putting together, um, a group that's going to deal with, um, evictions. To see what we can do about, um, limiting the number of evictions, if we can limit those. Um, in so much as, um, at least keeping them out of the court system for a period of time. And we're going to be talking to Jim and judges and some of those kinds of folks to talk about, how could, how could we do that? And what would it take to work together to be able to keep, to avoid some evictions if we can avoid them? So, and so Jim and I'll have a conversation about that. Surprise, Jim?
He was telling me the other day he was looking for stuff to do.
Was he? Oh, boy. But I have to tell you, Jim and his staff have been so responsive to my department. It's, it's amazing. And we deal with legal work all the time. And he's reviewed contracts, um, from the region and some of those kinds of things. And he's been just a tremendous help. So we really appreciate his cooperation, his assistance to us.
Well, I always think that that's probably the, the, what most of their constituents don't understand is the breadth of services that the county attorney has to provide. And the, the different, you know, from, from construction management to indigent care and to community services to prosecution. So it's a, it's a broad, a broad, broad office.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it's great to hear there that you're doing good.
Um, I think my last page is thirteen. I just wanted to remind you that, um, we pay local funeral homes for those cremations. We do not pay for folks to go out of county to do a cremation if they're indigent Muscatine County residents. I know some counties do pay for other funeral homes to do that. We have a great working relationship with our funeral homes here and they are amazing. And we've had, we've developed a really good working relationship with, um, the medical examiner's office in being able to get people where they need to go and get families, get some of those, um, issues resolved for their loved one that's passed away. So, and we still have, um, the city of Muscatine donating, um, burial space if somebody wants those ashes buried. So most of the time, the family wants to take them, but.
A thousand dollars does that?
Yes.
Cremation expense?
Yes. And one of the things we do is if we have folks that have, um, let's say for a minute, I mean, sadly, we lost about six people in nursing homes due to COVID that we were guardian for. And, um, in some cases, in their personal accounts at the nursing home, they had a significant amount of money. And so we applied that amount of money to the burial. And it offset some of the cost. And that was the working agreement that we had with the funeral home. So that the cost was a thousand dollars because they met the income guidelines for us. But they had this other money that was going to simply go back to, um, Medicaid. If it wasn't, but, cause Medicaid allows for it to be spent on, um, burial or cremation or whatever the case may be. And so we've done that as well, which is a different way of doing business than we've done before.
Right.
Okay? Any questions? All the rest of it is all the same.
Well, I appreciate your staff taking the time. I read through it this weekend. A lot of things and, and some good thoughts. And I, I, I didn't have any concerns with some of the recommended changes I saw.
Well, and I have to tell you, um, Dylan is the primary, um, G A person. And, um, she's done an amazing job in terms of being able to grasp a hold of case coordination and being able to, um, push forward with that philosophy. And Teresa Beauchamp has been a great trainer because her mind kind of runs in that direction beside. So it's been a really easy transition for us. Okay?
You did a great job, Felicia.
Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion? I have a motion by Doug.
I'll second.
Second by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. I would note, uh, Leslie, that I got a note from Nathan that he had a, a ten o'clock court appearance that he was not, so he is out off the meeting as of ten A M. So we have opposed the same, opposed the same, sorry, getting into the, okay, hearing none opposed. Motion carries. Get myself confused, which is not that hard some days. Felicia, did you have anything else for us this morning?
No, I really don't.
Anybody have anything for Felicia? Thank you so much. Okay, item number seven is discussion, possible action to prove the minutes, September twenty-first, regular meeting. A motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Santos. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed the same? Motion carries. Correspondents. Santos?
Um, just, uh, had the email from, uh, Jim in regards to the, the updated changes that we had made, recommended for the Arbor Commons and the city and the county. And then, um, I had a chance to go down with Keith to go look at some of the project worked on G twenty-eight. And, um, very pleased with how it worked that those contractors have been going through. And, um, very pleased to be able to have that time. And then also got a chance to go down and look over down on, uh, the road we've been talking about potentially vacating over on Keokuk. And, uh, I think maybe in the future, upcoming maybe weeks, we look at having that discussion again. I think there's a lot of valid points in, in potentially us vacating that, but, yeah, we can put that on the agenda sometime in the future. That's all I have, of course, on this.
I had no correspondence to note, Scott?
Um, I had a call from a resident in regard to, just had a conversation about rezoning some property, uh, uh, on the west side of, uh, Wilton. And that's all I had.
Doug?
I got a call from Jim Marvis. I kind of know why, I don't know why he's here this morning. And that's all the response I had.
Okay. Next up, committee reports. Do you have any committees, Doug, last one? Scott?
Um, on Monday, the twenty-first, I had conservation board and they, uh, um, the bids, uh, went out for bid for the, uh, road work around the cabins and the concrete work and so on. Um, that's, uh, it's all moving forward. Nothing ever goes as quick as you'd like it to, obviously, but, uh, toured the cabins and the facility. Uh, very pleased with, uh, what I saw there. Uh, when those are finished, I think they're going to be very well received by the community in the surrounding counties. Uh, I, I'm, I'm very optimistic that, uh, those will, will have a tremendous amount of usage. Just incredibly nice sitting on those, uh, uh, edges of those bodies of water. So that's all I have.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, on the twenty-first, I had the Mississippi Valley Workforce Area C E O meeting. On the twenty-first, I also had the Eastern Island Mental Health Special Meeting. And then East, the Eastern Island Mental Health Regular Board Meeting. On the twenty-third, I had the Bi-State Commission. On the twenty-fifth, I had another, uh, Eastern Island Mental Health Special Board Meeting. Santos, how about yourself?
Um, the twenty-third, I had, uh, Bi-State and on the twenty-fourth, I have Relied.
I would, I would, I'll probably go back and make a note on the Eastern Island, you, the special meeting. So there was CARES, CARES Act funding that went out. Uh, and they put out an R F P to all providers in the mental health and disability services region for, uh, grant opportunities, about one point nine million, I think we got. Had a lot of grants. We had, uh, a bit of disagreement in it as to, had mostly to do with the hazard pay. Uh, and I think that the, the board determined that we'd done some granting and then we had three that were, there were a lot of questions on and they, that's why the second meeting, because we wouldn't approve them. And then they came back and ultimately we stripped some stuff out and approved some basic stuff, P P E, you know, cleaning supplies and stuff. But the whole notion of, of, uh, hazard pay and such, the board felt that it was important that we create a policy. Because I think initially the concept was, oh, this is, you know, we're not responsible. These are CARES Act and they're, the provider is responsible if they use them wrongly. And I think that's a bad idea. And we, we, I think we finally got a clarification from David Farmer that, yes, in fact, the regional governing board is responsible. If these are for non-allowable expenses, we will have to repay those federal funds. And therefore, uh, we really have to watch that. And federal funds cannot be used to bonus people. Uh, you can, you know, the notion of hazard pay. So I think where the board settled and we want to write a policy around is, if an individual has to go into home or, or have personal contact with a COVID-positive person, that we believe that there's probably, we could fund through CARES Act funding some compensation for that. But certain, some of these people were telehealth providers, administrative staff. And there's absolutely no way that we could use federal, or, we don't believe federal funds could be used for that in the CARES Act. So that was why all those meetings that are going to continue, because we had a little bit of a disagreement to work through. Just wanted to make sure this board was on, on stat, on, on that policy. I know we haven't done anything. I mean, we've had essential workers here working through the whole process and it's a risk and we know that. But, uh, who, how do you pick who should get extra money for what, you know? Should it be the, the person that needs to deliver mail or meals or? Because this would only be for, uh, people that were working with those with intellectual or, or physical disabilities. And, you know, as others, there are people in home healthcare that aren't getting extra funds. So how do you draw the line? It's a really tough, tough situation. So that's why all the, what's going on in the mental health region.
Well, we appreciate all that time you're taking for.
Yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, items with the administration office. Uh, item number ten A is action to accept September twenty, twenty peril claims.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Santos.
Second.
Second by Doug. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed the same? Motion carries. Item number ten B is discussion, possible action to accept a proposal from control system specialists to replace or upgrade and upgrade the Muscatine County jail building controls in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This was the item that was tabled, uh, the last meeting. I know we had a couple of people out that probably weren't expecting it. So I think we have the experts in the room. I see Oscar and Sherry are both with us today. And I think, so, uh, just like to maybe, Sherry, you want to give a brief update of what this is?
This is an item that is in the current year budget.
Okay.
Um, it's a, it's a situation with the, the system that has been an issue for quite some time. And we just got to the point where rather than putting any more money into the current system, which is a proprietary system, that it was time to look at changing. We got an estimate, a budget, and we're deciding to put, put that dollar amount in the budget. Now the amount, and this is a little higher than the budgeted amount. But we have, um, had some contracts, so some projects could end at last, so we can cover this additional amount. It's something that the sheriff has signed up on. They feel like it's necessary. C S S does our controls with other buildings. We're happy with them. But the, and, and I know Oscar would like it, has to be consistent with the control systems that we use. But the, the fact that this is a non-proprietary system is the big deal. If something happens and we decide, well, I can use you for this, we can call somebody else and they can work on these parts or.
Yeah, that was my question. I didn't, I mean, I didn't. Yeah, that was my question. I didn't, I mean, I didn't see the details. So these are like Allen Bradley controls and we've got, I mean, because I didn't understand why we're changing all the dampers and motors and all the sensors and...
I think because it's proprietary, we have to.
Since nineteen ninety five, this has been the way we control the jail. And we've been looking at this controls have been getting obsolete, not to mention the way that the animations are. The magnet is really totally archaic, I would say. So at this point, we just have limited access to view the building and control the building. There have been several times that we had to reset the main computer in order to get access to it. So basically, we don't have response, very good, I would say, customer service with them. In their agreement, they're supposed to be here every month, and it hasn't happened for a while. The last record that I spoke to one of them was August twenty seventh, to get a generator report for the jail, which I don't know how they manage it, but they did it. Anyway, when Santos was talking about the consistency on Ben Lord's controls and everything, I really been happy. I really been happy with these guys because they provide the service that we need. We control this building with CS controls, and I don't have any problems. I don't have a contract with them, and they respond to every call that I have about controls. We switched Community Services for the full service from with my controls to these guys. And we have the same lock. So if there are calls, like I used to call, used to have, or something is not working, et cetera, it's a mechanical issue, but it's never a control issue. The control just send a signal and establish communication with us. We're fine with them. In the jail, let's say I've been bringing up so many things where the, all the equipment is proprietary. And that brings us to, we lock to CI three. And CI three is here only when they feel they need to be here. So we got poor customer service, not to mention that this is a thirty four seven building. I need access all the time to see what's going on. Sometimes I don't have that access, like I said. The system, like I said, has been getting falling down. So everything, every component, actuator, little motors that they have, they come and patch it instead of replacing it. So that's not really what we're looking at.
So is this primarily the ninety five, or does, does that system control both the jail additions?
Correct.
Both jail additions? So when we, we use the same controls vendor for continuity, probably when they built the new jail, ten years ago now, or whatever it was, right?
There's a big brain on as an end over.
Right.
Which, in the last meeting that I had with them, because they offer continuing education, this is CI three offering continuing education and what's out there. So on November last year, I went to one of the seminars, and I learned that everything that we have there is going to be obsolete in the next three, two to three years. That's how they calculate. Based on that, they told me that they end over, which is a big frame, I don't know how to describe it. Now it's going to be like something like this. Well, it's going to cost us money. That was my opportunity to tell them, okay, I need to know how much it's going to be, all the changes. And I've been insisting on them, I've been insisting on them on March this year, because they never showed up. So I liked, I liked to have a number to provide, Sherry, says this is what it's going to cost us to change. I never had a number from them. That's part of my complaint about the full service. They were given the opportunity, this is the case. That's why I've been more into customer service, to provide a good service, but it's not there. Now, the next thing is that the jail has come with something where they want to control their dampers.
Their dampers?
Yeah. In the vent of a riot, they want to isolate sections. So they throw some tear gas. The gas wouldn't travel to the next section. So the dampers would close there, do whatever they need to do, and then it clears out, et cetera. So this is something that CI three can't really answer, and we don't even know if we have the means to have that. When speaking with CS controls, they provide a solution to that. The sheriff was involved in the conversation I had. We have a pre meeting with this.
And this would be considered a service contract?
The implementation of the, of the equipment, or whatever you call it, would be a capital project. And then we have, I assume we'll have an existing annual contract for maintenance?
It's on there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's part of this, but we have what now with CI three, we have with them, and we may hear from them now, if word gets out, that they're really going to make a difference. But we've reached out to them and said, okay, you're saying the system's obsolete, you're going to be sued. How much is it going to cost us to upgrade it? We can't get an answer. So as far as going out for other numbers, we've tried, but, but we can't. So, and, and part of the reason this is a little bit higher than what we originally budgeted is because of putting in the adding to the system, so they can close off dampers in between areas if they need to. It's, it's an upgraded system, a little bit different than what we have. The timing of it is, I, I believe, when we talked about budget time, with the amount of inmate revenue that the jails bring in there. Back to, if I was sheriff, he wanted to, he wanted to make a change to this system, but the dollars just weren't available. We feel like they're bringing in the dollars. It's time to fix this. It's time to make a change to something that works more better.
And I haven't followed all, I just know control systems, you know, use that general speaking. In the ten years I've been on the board, they've been, it seems like it's always been a disaster. And, and I don't know whether, you know, I'm a little bit concerned on the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Do we need to go through a competitive bid process? But I also understand the flip side of that, because anytime you're dealing with technology, there's a certain level of proprietary nature of them. You know, what's the base engine? You know, the, the graphic interface, the interface side, and then the hardware side, and then the kind of intermediary with your PLCs and all that, you know, there's, there's different technologies, different vendors out there, and I understand that.
At one point, we had three different control vendors in our buildings, and we're trying to, to switch that over to one.
So CI three is the integrator, correct? Andover is the hardware?
Same with software.
What's that?
Software.
It's software. So it, it's, it's the, like, the GUI and, and all that, yeah. And then, and then, so are we, are we changing, like, the, the electronics side of it as well? Or you're saying that the Andover only works with this certain electronics, or they have their own integrated electronics?
The way they described it is that they're going to integrate to the existing components and change the membrane, this is the law.
Yeah. And what, what do they use for control software? Do you know?
The only thing that we have or work with maintenance or CSS on is, it was in Java, but now with an HTML five. It's just a web interface. So I can't really tell you what the backend is on that.
Are you talking about the proposed change or the what we have now?
Little bit of both.
What, what we have now is a, it was a SQL database. Now, it's still a SQL database, but they're able to use SQL Express with it. We recently updated that, which was probably the last time that I had any contact with CI three, which was back in November timeframe. And Schneider Corp. is the one that provides the software for Andover. Andover's going away. It's getting a new name, and it's going to be a different solution. And I believe it's going to be a web interface as well. Currently, they have to remote into systems in order to get to the management interface. So that we have a system at the courthouse that they can remote into to check temperatures and so forth. We have a system at the jail. We really have a server that kind of collects everything and gives CI three remote access to it. CSS, they come in, basically, I think they just connect to their controller, which I assume is just a controller board. And that is how they access their systems to manage those.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a, it's a fairly complicated world, but I, you know, I've, I've lived in there a long time, and I, I've seen this play out. And the, you know, there are proprietary solutions for these kinds of applications, as I call them. And there are non proprietary solutions. And I, what I think would be great is if we got to a point where we did that non proprietary. And then also, you know, some of the hardware you use, you know, and now we're talking about, like, programmable logic controllers and all of those kinds of things. I think that it would be in our best interest to have an open source and a standard there, so that we have maintainability as we go forward. So you have, you know, you drop something out. I don't know. I mean, it's a lot of money, but they're expensive systems. That's fact, so.
Well, and, and when we initially looked at this, the sheriff way looked into it, with a number of places, we were looking at the lowest estimate was a half hundred thousand.
That's Nathan.
That's Nathan. You're back, Nathan?
I'm back, clear now.
Okay.
So...
We're discussing item ten B. Yeah.
So this is, this is a couple hundred thousand less than what when we, you know, in our long range planning, or planning to do this. We have to set aside a half a million dollars. So I was pleased when CSS took a look at this, and it came back with what it did.
I have quite a few questions, I guess. And I'm a little concerned about the details that they have in this quote, if you want to call it. And I'm questioning just general items. When they talk about providing install, does that mean that they're taking out the old? And they're putting in, or is this the labor only to provide and install, so we're keeping what we have for existing? When they say install ninety, ninety-four zone controllers and actuators, install ninety-four new zone thermostats, you know, new controllers for replacing sensors. Are we removing, is that including removing the existing?
Not necessarily. So basically, if you're looking, for example, at actuator, actuator is a mechanical part that just opens and closes as you will. So what you're changing there is the command.
So they're changing the mechanical, the air, the air actuator, they're not changing the mechanical valve. They're just changing the actuator function that opens it.
Should the mechanical thing fail, they would be responsible to...
That's why they're saying they're not changing out the, well, they're not changing out control valves.
Correct.
But then they're changing, so, but yeah, so then the new zone controllers, that's what I'm getting at. So they are taking out the old and putting in new. But it doesn't say in that. It doesn't say remove the old and install. They're, they're just saying providing install. So that's what I'm saying. I just want to be careful that we're getting caught up in the language of saying, well, we're just including the labor for removal of the existing. That's what I'm asking on. And then the next piece is, is they're providing one year monitoring and warranty for all new components, but they're not providing labor for, for those, for that, for that warranty. And then they say two years on warranty on the ABB produces, uh, ace, whatever, something provided on that piece is for two years. So I was, I was hoping that they would provide, most things provide one year for labor and parts and labor. And this doesn't.
That's what part the three, three hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand. So there comes a contract, which is bumper to bumper.
Yeah.
The contract would take care of all that, because as it is right now, CI three is doing their own thing. So we don't pay a penny to CI three to show up and replace, change, work on something. The same thing when I was asking them to write a proposal. It was divided like, this is the first proposal is if we choose not to go with a contract. If we choose to go through a contract, that would be covered.
See, that's the, I don't, it says total maintenance contract. What is all included in that total maintenance contract?
I can have more detail.
You know, I, I, I'm concerned about that, because that's fifty two thousand dollars per year. And does that happen after one year of our warranty? Or does that start the day after they're completing the project?
Not the way it was said to me, but you're right, they should be written there. But not the way it's said to me. Because once they own up a contract, they take care of every single component in there.
Yeah, that, so, and I hate to say this, but I feel like I would want to see that contract to make sure that that's what you're saying, that it says.
I'd want Jim to see that contract to make sure that we're covered.
Fifty two thousand dollars a year, which I'm good with if they cover all those things, Oscar. But, but it just says, you know, total maintenance contract, nothing else after that. Doesn't say what services are provided, what, you know, you just talked about twenty four hour services, interface with what you're doing.
Well, and from what I understand, we ask for a cost to switch over.
Okay.
We will sign a contract with them for annual maintenance when the time comes. What you're telling us for this...
So we're not approving that portion of this, if we request that?
That's the way I understand it, that the contract would be a separate item, just like the CI three. But they're saying the cost of that contract is included in this.
It, I thought it was three twenty plus fifty two per year. And you're saying the three twenty includes a fifty two?
I don't think, I don't think it does, the way this is written. I think the fifty...
I don't, I don't think. I guess that's where I'm confused. I thought it was just the...
Is it three twenty that gets us a year, and then after the three twenty for the, you know, that's installed?
No, I think because this is...
For one year, and then fifty two a year thereafter?
Because this is a maintenance contract. I would, I think probably the maintenance contract would kick in right away. But that's different than a warranty.
Why would I be paid for that maintenance contract if I'm paying, if it says I have one year monitoring, warranty and labor?
Because there's, because there's, there's no maintenance work that would be done then, that first, first year. That's how I interpret it. So obviously, that, that needs to be fleshed out.
Item eleven says this, for the three hundred and twenty, to provide one year monitoring and warranty on all new components, two year warranty on all new ABB siloed produces provided. I don't, I don't know what that means. Then down below, they talk about after the warranty period is up, that for fifty two thousand a year, which is about what we spend now, maybe that's a little less than that for the warranty contract. Which, before we sign them, we take a look at what's that involved, but typically...
Where does it say?
Well, it doesn't say after.
Where does it say after the warranty?
It doesn't say that.
I, I agree with you. I don't think that that's, it says that at all.
I guess I just want some clarity on that. And I know that if you're just asking them, Oscar...
I know, it talks about the one year warranty, and then what it's telling us is our, an annual maintenance contract would be fifty two thousand a year. We can, we can verify that, but it's, it's...
Because, I mean, that could say it was fifty grand, is I guess what I was asking. If it, if it does. If it's not, then it's, then, then if it's also including, like Oscar says...
Are you, are you thinking that the fifty two thousand warranty contract is in the first year a lot?
Yes, because, because a warranty isn't going to cover maintenance.
Because it doesn't say it covers labor. It just says it covers parts.
And this is just a controls vendor. This is not a hardware vendor. They're just providing the electronics and the software to drive the controls to the devices. And they're not going to warrant the devices. They're not warranting the actuators and the, the zone controllers.
Well, they should be warranting the actuators.
They're warranting the ones they're providing, the new ones, I suppose.
And so then...
That's just a manufacturer's warranty, right?
The reason this cost is less than half a million is the parts that are there that are working, we're going to leave there. We're not going to replace, we're not going to pull the whole system out, replace the whole system. We're going to replace the pieces that need to be replaced. The pieces that need to be replaced will be included after warranty. And warranties that, if we take up an annual contract, it would be fifty two thousand dollars a year. I, I get why that would be confusing.
So, yeah, if we could clarify some of those pieces, and I think the other piece that I get on where it goes down to where it's this courthouse system that's included, it says, it says, provide all new controls for the boilers, ERV, geolubes. How many is that? Is that five? Is that twenty? Is that one? You know, it doesn't clarify in this quote. You know, what are those, how many is that specifically? I guess just to give, to have more clarity on what we're, what they're providing, it would be, it would be helpful for me. It would be, it would be helpful for me. And, and on that total maintenance, if, if it's including like what you're saying bumper to bumper, that's covering everything from the courthouse to the, to the jail and it, and it's covering old, existing and new. Then that, then that gives me more clarity in this, you know, that may be already something they've communicated to you, Oscar, but I'm not seeing that.
Well, and that, it, this brings back a conversation, you know, I can remember from years ago where we had other contractors on maintenance and there was always a rub on what does that maintenance contract cover and what doesn't it, you know, it's like normal wear and tear. You know, I'm paying you fifty grand a year and, you know, of course on a maintenance contract, your first few years, they're going to make great money, but at some point components wear and age and is that maintenance contract covering those wearing and aging components? We need to understand this, so we know the financial exposure on this long term. Because I think we, I don't remember the one we ran into it where there were devices that I would have considered, you know, it's kind of like with you, Bill, right? We put in a server, we give an ad, there's an expected life on them. And our maintenance budget needs to account for the fact that every five to seven to ten years or whatever, we're going to have to replace so many controllers, so many zone, because they're going to continually upgrade their electronics and they're going to fail.
Uh, just for the record, um, I don't work for the guys, so I'm not here to sponsor them. I'm here just to provide my feedback as to service that I have from them. So I can say that in this building, as well as the community services building, we haven't incurred any issue with the controls, as we had to replace it because it's our guarantee, et cetera, et cetera. There's no such thing right now with that. The second thing is that the guys pick up the phone and solve my issues without a contract.
Right.
So I wonder what red carpet that it will extend for me with a contract. Um, but again, once again, the, when I got these papers, when I had the opportunities to see the contract from CI three and CS controls, the proposal, I was comparing apples to apples and I was asking questions. Uh, am I need to have them do more or work better? Some of those, uh, I tell you guys are concerns.
So. I guess if we were to, and I'm thinking this kind of further out, if we were to get clarification on some of those items, could we then move this to next week to get that approved versus us doing that today, Oscar, because that helps us. I don't know how soon you want to move on some of these things and yet I would like some clarity around those pieces, just so we know the correct numbers, the warranty provided, provided.
Sure.
And, and if you're, if you're, again, explaining that these are good services that, you know, we want, I mean, I think that's really kind of just, just some clarity around those portions from my perspective.
Sure.
Can you, uh, ask me to be more specific about?
What they're doing and where and, you know, because what we don't want to do is go back down the same rabbit hole with proprietary solutions. So we want to understand is, you know, what's different about this? So how do we, how do we safeguard ourselves so we aren't faced with every, I don't know, two hours, one system is twenty years old now, right? So twenty years is probably a reasonable expectation for.
The issue needs to be a little less.
Yeah.
Well, maybe they'll have a maintenance contract that you could share with us, once they have that, if you do have that.
What their, what would their maintenance contract look like and exactly, you know, because even, even it's a little bit confusing with the warranty, with the one year and the two year. So when does the maintenance contract kick in? Is that day one? Is it day three sixty-five?
Typically with, with contracts like this that we do, it's after the warranty period is up. I think it doesn't say that here, but I'm sure that's the intent, because they're just letting us know, if you do this, if you go with us, this is what you're, you're, us is going to be down the road.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I don't know whether that's a year from now or two years from now, even based on the way the proposal's written.
The, the two words that caused me pain is the add for. I don't know when you add, you know, are we talking three twenty? Are we talking, uh, three seventy-two? Are we three twenty up until a year from now or we add the fifty-two? That's where I need clarification. We're dealing a lot of money here, folks. I want to make sure it's correct.
Okay.
I, I, one last question, Oscar, Sherry on this. So if we, if we make this approval next week or discuss into that portion of it and we, we go with the CS or CSS for the controllers and, and all of these actuators and zone thermostats. Fast forward five years from now or four years from now and we look at this, another vendor. Is that going to be something that we would say, oh, hey, we don't, you know, we're going to need to replace all of those zone thermostats now because we're not compatible with that piece of information or is that, I mean, would that be a potential?
Well, look at the, well, no, look, you went here, but I. Back when we changed from Woodman Controls to CS Controls and back when we integrated um, Woodman Controls into the building, Community Services. We didn't have that issue because Woodman Controls went in and changed some of the components, electronic components to talk to the mechanical issues or the mechanical gizmos and it went okay. So CS Controls did the same thing. You would thought that, okay, this is an expander and it's going to change so many things. Well, all of it changing the brain that is going to send the commands, which I think is necessary, the front end. Uh, all the signals, every component there is the same.
Although with technology and some additional, you, you just never know.
Correct, I just didn't know.
Somebody's going to say, okay, none of that will work anymore.
You, you're, you're absolutely right.
Woodman Controls and CSS both use the same backend, if I remember right, it was called Nessus. And that's, I just remember seeing that load when it was still in JavaScript as opposed to big H T M O five. Uh, Nessus, I believe, in the S S V U S, or it could have been Nexus, I, I don't know. Since I don't use the system very often, it's.
Well, and the CI three controls and the CI three maintenance contract that we have now has always been handled and paid by the jail out of the jail budget. And we're just now stepping into this to handle this as a separate project, so.
Yeah.
You know, some of the questions may be made and answered a little better, but.
So would the, would the war, would the maintenance contract remain with the jail after?
As an expectation, yes.
Okay.
But I think there's some benefit to having Oscar and Bill be involved in what that looks like.
Oh, I'm absolutely on board with, you know, non-proprietary controls and something we understand and we can control because then it puts us in the driver's seat. I'm, I'm on board with that. I just don't understand where we are. That's my challenge and I don't understand exactly the proposal, which again, it's a lot of money. And I want to make sure that we're not, we're, we're not getting sideways of competitive bid process either here. I want to make sure we stay that if there's an opportunity to competitively bid it, we need to take that opportunity. And I understand, because I remember your pains with some of our other vendors and, you know, customer service is becoming a lost art, I think. But, um, we need to make sure that we get good service because again, you're running a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five operation over there and it needs, you know, it's not okay to say, I'll do it tomorrow. It's, it's today, it's now. Um, and we need, you know, that'll probably cost us.
Well, when we had a situation at one point that, um, the sheriff at the time, he signed the contract, he was trying to save a few dollars and, and there were some issues and they said, we're going to shut it up because you didn't sign the contract.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and, and when we got rid of our H U C contracts for our buildings, we can still call, you know, people we contracted with, if something's broken and say, could you come fix this and, you know, they took.
Yeah, it's just a cost.
Exactly, and we've saved pretty much some of the money doing that, but this system, this isn't something that our people can manage to work on, you know, we need, we need.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think I'm, I'm in supportive of it. I just would like to, I'd get in some more clarity around some of these items from my perspective. I understand Jeff's comments as well, too, but.
Well, and I think when Oscar and I looked over it, you know, we know what we've been talking about, so.
But a lot of those things make.
That it's not as clear to someone who wasn't part of the conversation, but.
Yeah, that's perfectly understandable.
And there's, there's no, the system we have now isn't failing, so to postpone this a week or however long it takes. I don't know with CSS, how long will it take them to redo this and, and make it a little more detailed. I assume that they can do it when we.
If, if not, we can wait two weeks. That's, that's.
Yeah, I'm, yeah. Okay, do we need to table this, Nancy, or what do we need to do?
Yep, just table it, yep.
So do we need a motion for the table?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Yeah, just an additional, um, so the reason we wanted to move on this is because the addition of uh, booking, which is also is going to be controlled by H B, so now it's going to incur to a conflict on controls. What's new was, oh, that's the reason. And also because I got a water heater project that you already know.
Yeah.
And that also has to be controlled by.
See, I saw that you had the, the water heater in there as well.
So that was kind of, I mean, not my pushing, it's just my reason for presenting this at this time.
We want, yeah, we wanted to have this ready to go, so when we get to that point that they can, I assume our, our construction manager will coordinate all these people at the same time. Because like I told Oscar, what we don't want is to put new controls in, then we have to booking and they've got to redo something or, you know, that we coordinate this work over there all at the same time if we can. And we haven't signed a contract. Everyone up for this for the booking expansion, so we've got time to do this. We just want everyone, all, all the players to know, here's what's going to happen in that building. How, how you guys work it out, so we don't duplicate that. It's important.
Okay. So they have a motion, Santos making a motion to table.
To table until documents are provided.
Scott will second. Uh, I have a motion to table from Santos, second by Scott. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same? Motion is tabled. Okay, uh, item C is discussion possible action approved resolution oh nine twenty-eight, twenty oh one, suspending the collection of taxes.
This is a situation where, um, this gentleman actually lives in Oregon and he's rece, receiving services there. Um, the son had approached you guys last year about suspending, about suspending taxes. You had agreed to do that, um, with a strong recommendation that they move forward and try to get the house sell, sold. So, um, we received the request again this year. The house hasn't sold. Um, and Amy tells me there's also.
A special assessment from the city that was assessed the September of, um, August of twenty nineteen. Meaning they had to go out and mow or pick up trash or something, so that told me that the property wasn't cared for. It, a hundred and eighty-seven dollars they turned in, so now that is taxed, that's, that's payable this month. So now they have all of last year's taxes that are, um, not paid and then this year's taxes plus that special assessment on the books.
Do we know if the property is listed for sale?
We're told that.
We're told it is.
We're told that it is, and I think they provided the name of the.
Realtor.
The Realtor.
And it's been for sale for how long?
A year.
Year.
I think longer than that.
Obviously, the price is too high. So at some point, um.
Because he told us a year ago that it was already listed for sale when he made the request last year, so it's been over a year. And he says that in his letter that the hot, the price has been reduced three times.
Still the same Realtor.
Uh, appears to be. Says the listing agent, Dawn Williams, with Iowa Realty, appears to be competent enough to complete the sale. We are in regular contact and she knows I want to sell this house.
So if we were to do the suspension, would that be for a full year or for six months?
You, you would have the option to do, if you, you would have the option to do whichever you wanted to. Um, whatever portion you suspend would then remain suspended typically until the house is sold.
The bottom line is that the, the individual meets all the criteria for a suspension. They, you know, they're.
Other than, other than all of the services that he's receiving are from Oregon and the way the Iowa code's written, you don't have to recognize another state's assistance.
Right, he moved him out of, out of state so he could be closer to care for him?
Yep.
And when the property sells, the taxes get paid out of the.
Yes.
I'm like Scott, obviously it's still overpriced.
Yeah.
They need to move it.
But I, you know, I'm, I'm to the point where then there's a process that'll take care of that long term as well. I'm, I'm okay with suspending the taxes. I mean, I don't want to add, you know, but at some point it could go into collection. I, yours, if we, if we do, if we don't suspend the taxes, then it'll, it'll push that along.
In June, it would go to tax sale.
Yep.
In June, it would go to tax sale.
Then you'd involve a, a tax seller investor would then be involved, but they, they wouldn't actually take deep into the property for another two years before they can.
Right.
This is the only one that hasn't gone through a D H S, um, approval suspension.
Right.
This is a, a unique situation.
Yeah.
And, and I'm just here for clarification because if you, if you don't continue to suspend it, then I need to know a due date of when the interest will be collected on last year's taxes and, you know, um, because this is a unique situation.
It is.
Well, if it's any help, we just sold a condemned house for eighteen thousand dollars in less than a week.
Yeah.
I haven't looked up this property ever.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there's.
I would feel com- comfortable just giving six more months.
Suspend for six?
I would suspend for six months and if it doesn't come back by then, then we're, I'd feel that, I've, because I think we've already done, in my opinion, enough. I, I'm discouraged with giving it another year.
I would agree with, with Santos on this. Um, uh, this property can be sold even if, uh, even if they need to auction this property. And, uh, uh, it's obvious to me that it needs to be sold. That's obvious. And so, um, we've had a situation here possibly where we got, uh, an individual that feels it's worth more money or maybe it's San Amato, I don't know, but probably feels it's worth more money than what the market says it is. And, uh, um, they just need to move forward with this and, uh, get more aggressive with a Realtor or, um, get with, uh, um, uh, an auction, uh, an auction company and just, uh, have a, uh, have a sale and sell it.
So when you say you want to suspend it for six months, then when the six months is up next March, then taxes are due, um, by the end of that month and then after that they incur penalty
Six months is God's plenty time.
By then, they should hopefully already have it sold. At least they, they understand we have a date now that this is, we've already given them enough time, ample time in our view, to be able to start making accommodations for.
Liquidate property and get on.
And hopefully by then, if they, if it isn't, then we go through those steps like you just mentioned.
Isn't it still on the tax rolls that in June it would go to tax down?
Yeah, because if no one pays the taxes, they'll go to tax sale and they'll deal with, they may lose it. Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to approve for six more months.
Approve suspension for six months. Uh, would we have to redo that resolution, Nancy?
Well, I, I'll have to change the language and it's.
Okay, so we can approve it pending the change, okay?
Yep.
So you, Santos has made a motion.
I'll second.
Scott will second. Uh, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye, aye, aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item D is discussion and direction regarding a draft ordinance regulating the operation of ATV, UTV on secondary roads in Muscatine County.
So what was provided to you was just kind of a starting point, um, based on direction you gave after you held that, that public meeting. Um, this is essentially Lynn County, um, with some, some tweaks to it. Uh, one being obviously changing to Muscatine County. We changed the language regarding violations and enforcement because the county already has an ordinance specifically that addresses that. We did, we did that to standardize across the board how we're handling these. I did get an email from Jim to mo, this morning, right before the meeting about, um, some potentially, some language change there. To go, to go beyond what this says, so that then whatever you guys talk about and we put in for changes, you'll probably see that in the next version.
Okay.
And so the way this process was, will work, needs to work is you guys need to essentially work through this until you have a document that, um, you are, you reasonably believe that you would adopt. Then we would hold a public hearing so that, for the public had ability to comment on what you were attending. Then we would hold a public hearing so that, for the public had ability to comment on what you were attending, intending to adapt, and we, and then we would go through the, the three reading process of an ordinance.
I read through it, and I don't have any issues, the only comment I would make is on the, you know, at the meetings we talked about were the roads that we would wanna restrict. We had that discussion around Stewart Road and Patty Bowden down in that area, um, and, and we, there's, there's a, a section for that, and a provision for it in this ordinance, but there was nothing listed, so that's something I think that the, that if you wanted to do that, and so, other than that, I'd open it up for discussion.
One other note that I would make is, is at least Nathan did have some conversation about whether or not you limit the hours about, that, that, that this would be allowed. Um, the ordinance from Lynn County did say dawn to dusk, I modified that, um, to say four AM to eleven PM, but I know at least Nathan had, had thrown out what's the difference between eleven and midnight, and maybe you just open it up altogether.
I'm, that's where I stand on this, um, why is there a time restriction? I don't understand that, it's, it's, it's just as dark at ten o'clock as it is at two in the morning, and, uh, and, and, and you'll have people say, well, why in the world would anybody need to be on one of these machines at whatever time in the morning? And, uh, an example I can think of, um, right off the top of my head, when this started talking about timeframes, and, and those are guys that, that, uh, maybe work second shift, and, uh, maybe they hunt ducks out on, uh, in a pothole or out in the cedar or whatever, and they're going to take, and, and, and a number of these guys build, build very nice blinds that they will actually go there and they'll sleep in this blind, uh, and as they, as they wait for, uh, uh, shooting time to come, and they will go and, and drive to whatever point where maybe they'll have their ATV, UTV parked at a, at a property close by, and they'll have to travel maybe, uh, any given distance, half mile, two miles, three miles down, down the road at, uh, maybe it's one in the morning, you know? And, uh, that's just a, a quick example of, of why a person would, would utilize that, that tool, uh, for that, just a, a situation at that. So, um, myself, I, I, I don't see why there's any timeframe restriction on this. Um, these vehicles have, uh, headlights, taillights, and appropriate lighting, um, so that's just my two cents on that. Um, and while we're all, we're kinda on that, um, down below that talks about unlawful operation without the following equipment, and it says, uh, properly functioning headlights, taillights, operational brakes, functioning brake lights, and a speedometer. Um, and I'm sure that all that equipment is currently on, um, any, any, uh, recently manufactured devices, but there may be some out there that, uh, uh, don't have all those items. And, uh, I think it's, if a person has an older machine, I think it's up to the individual, um, if it does not come from the factory, it throws all these devices that, then that person could only operate that machine, um, from, uh, sunrise to sunset.
Not out during the dark hours, and good thing if one o'clock, you're.
True, true.
Yeah, to me, it's, 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 do you operate when it's dark or not? If, if, if the answer is yes, then I don't see any practical reason to put hour limits on it, cause it just complicates it if you have other counties with similar legislation, and, and, and in my mind, if it's, if it's a street legal device, which there are definitions of, we all take driver's tests that tell us what's street legal, what constitutes that, if it's street legal, it's street legal. Uh, if it's not, then you choose to operate it on the street, then it's your risk, because law enforcement has every opportunity to enforce that today. I don't, you know, and I don't know if a speedometer is required to be street legal, I think you have to have brakes, you have to have headlights, you have to have, you know, some of that, but I'm not sure a speedometer is.
Speedometer was my point.
Yeah, uh, so.
Was there a thirty five mile?
I think we, wasn't there an allowance in there, I don't, I'm not, I'm not necessarily crazy about the comment that if it was so equipped, I mean, you can take things off of devices, but I'm, to me, I'm, I'm kinda one of those people, if it's, we have a definition of what street legal is, and if it's street legal, you can run it on the street.
Yeah, but one thing I would say relative to the night operation, the code does make it illegal to operate one at night without headlights and taillamps and those things.
Correct, and I understand that point completely, which would make that particular machine.
Illegal on.
Illegal on the street at, right.
And so I just, yeah, I think where it started was there's reference in the code to the sunset, sunrise sort of thing, and, and so it's probably been interpreted, interpreted by different counties a different way, but what we don't wanna do is pass anything that would conflict with the state code relative to the requirement. So if you're gonna allow operations whenever, it just, they have to be, they have to meet state code in terms of lights, uh, and operation.
Yeah, my, my point on my conversation, on my argument was the speedometer that you, that you have to have a speedometer on your machine.
Which wouldn't conflict with the night driving.
Correct.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know that it means, it needs to be street legal, and I don't pretend to understand that all the rules for the street legal.
I, I had a few questions that I wanted to talk about, so one of the things that I didn't see was about passengers, um, we had talked about making sure if there was equipped with seat belts and stuff, but I think my, my concern was around to get sure that, um, some of these UTVs have the ability to pull trailers or pull extra things, and I kinda wanna make sure we have the clarity around. You know, I'm not gonna pull my trailer, I'm not gonna pull, you know, five guys in the back of my little homemade trailer now that we're gonna go down to the park, because now we're in a legal UTV. Uh, so I didn't see anything on that nature of, of that, basically, where somebody would wanna start pulling, you know, or hey, now I'm gonna pull my, my, uh, my small boat down to go to the lakes. I can see Kurt being concerned about that, or now we're pulling trailers with, with homemade, you know, I, I, that was a concern for me. It, 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 it's just something that I didn't see in that portion of it, and then we talked about trails, saying that, um, you're not gonna be allowed to go down trails unless the trails are designated for that type of equipment. I, I don't know if ours are, or if Kurt has information on how those are, and, and, and if they are, does that mean that we gotta now start now putting signs up that they're not designated for it, because then everybody in the brother's gonna wanna go down to our trails now, and I'm probably gonna get calls from Kurt saying, hey, we're tearing up our, our trails now with everybody coming up and down these are. So I, I think that would be something that we'd wanna either document or let Kurt know that, hey, cause I'm sure he'll, he'll be open to wanna enforce that if he starts seeing his trails getting tore up with those.
And the trail thing's right out of the state code, it says you cannot do it, you can't.
Correct, but I don't, but, but does that mean, that's the point, is, is does our, our ours rated?
Yeah, I.
The city can put some of those in.
Yeah, I think all of our trails, no motorized vehicles on the signs.
But you go right up and down the levee, you know, city's got their trucks going up and down those to clean the, the snow and to clean the, so they're driving.
Well, we exempt ourselves.
That's what I'm getting. So, I, I guess I just wanted to be clear on that, on that portion of it.
It's just like the city doesn't allow you to operate ATVs in the city unless they're theirs.
But, but I guess what I'm getting at is back to the point where we had in the initial discussion, if we're identifying roads that are not made to potentially, like, for example, the Stewart Road, for example, um, then I would like to have that included saying, hey, none of our trails that are in the city that we're having, or in the county that are X, Y, Z over here by the deep lakes or this one. If they are exempt, and they are allowable, then write that in, if they're not allowable, then maybe we should have that in there as well, too. That's my, my point, is what I was getting at. I can have the rated, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I can't think of any trails that, that allow that, that, at all, I mean, it's only in state designated areas, um, uh, for ATV, motorized, uh, riding, um, I, I, I can't even think of one.
I, what, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't even think of one.
I, I know that when we, when we put in the trails, and I look at some of the, the structure they go into for the, for what they, how they, you know, compact them, and how much gravel they put in, and the drainage and everything on them.
They're, they're pretty subtle, but they weren't, they're designed for biking, you know, they're not designed for, for that, so that, so am I, am I not, you know,
having that experience from an engineering standpoint, um, that's obviously a concern that we're gonna say, hey.
And, and I don't believe that's the intent of what we're discussing here, to let these machines run up and down bike trails and so on and so forth, that all is strictly for, for road use design.
I, I'm just saying that, just declaring, and saying, if it's, if it says it, I would like to just make sure that we're at least having a conversation if it's.
I, of course, uh, the ordinance says it'll be enforced under our enforcement ordinance, so it's obviously not a three twenty one code, which is your traffic laws. I just wanna be clear that who, who is, is this, the sheriff's office gonna be charged with enforcement of this? They typically don't enforce county infractions, which are our, our enforcement ordinance of county infractions. I just wanna make sure I'm not getting a call at midnight about the length of some UTV under the county code ordinances expected to be. Most all the ordinances are covered under the county enforcement, and under county infractions are building, zoning, nuisance ordinances. I don't know that we enforce other parts of our county code ordinances with our recently updated enforcement, so just seeking clarification on who the expected enforcement agency would be for this, this ordinance, just so everybody's clear on that, who's, who's going to enforce any violation found within this particular county.
Good question.
Well, from, I, you did get some feedback from the sheriff at some point, um, which I guess I interpret his feedback to indicate that he understood that potentially it was the sheriff's office responsible to enforce that, or, or that, no different than what they're doing now in terms of.
Yeah, I, I think.
Somebody's operating.
The response we got from the, I got from the sheriff was that he's, he viewed this as no different than what they're doing today, and that they're not going to go out and check all these things, if they see, see people operating in an, in irresponsible manner, then they're gonna stop them, and, and they have plenty of mechanisms to deal with that, uh, he was not, he didn't have concern, but I don't think, it's not our intention, I don't think, to, to put an onerous enforcement regu- on anybody, and that's, I think that's even to me the hours of operation. You know, it's kinda like, okay, if you put hours operation on, you know, is Scott gonna be calling me, cause Doug's driving by his house on his ATV at twelve o'clock, or twel- eleven thirty? You know, I, I, you know, that maybe is more in line with it, I don't think we want the sheriff getting those calls. I mean, they may get it if somebody's tearing up a field or out, you know, with mischief, and that's fine, that, that could happen today.
If there are roads that need to be strict, then there's gonna have to be signs, but on those roads, new base for that, when it comes out of the highway part of the budget, new base for that.
I have a question on restricting roads, so if you're going to restrict roads, how do you designate ATV, UTV versus, you know, say somebody that wants to ride their moped from Fruitland to Muscatine on Stewart Road? Are they not allowed? Because the moped, I'm assuming does about thirty five miles an hour top end.
But it's, it's got a separate definition from ATV or UTV or however it's defined, moped.
It's restricted.
Motor vehicle.
Okay.
This, this is pretty clear that, uh, speaking about altering vehicles under definition.
Utility vehicle.
Utility vehicle, they're specifically defined in here.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, could you start limiting all sorts of stuff at that point?
Right, no, well, they're, they're permissible under three twenty one code, you get a moped license, they're defined in three twenty one, and, and, uh, that type of thing, so I don't think that would exclude that from you, the restricted roads, I think. Those are supposed to be restricted only to ATVs and UTVs, my understanding, the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Not any, if not any other vehicle normally allowed under three twenty one state code.
Right.
One thing that I did read, um, and I don't remember what county it was, um, but that particular county, uh, and this goes back to restricting roads and the traffic on certain roads, this particular county, um, allowed these machines to run down any of the county roads, but the operator must depend, uh, must run the shortest distance on this, on this primary road, and has to turn off onto, uh, a, 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 an aggregate road is how they, how they described it, to get to your destination, trying to run as much, as many miles possible from point A to point B for the operator on that machine to keep the, the volume as low as possible on a road like Stewart Road, you understand what I'm trying to convey?
If section three has a, if there's a restricted roadway, second paragraph, you're permitted to operate on a restricted roadway only to reach the nearest unrestricted roadway. So if you designate roads in the county as restricted, then they're not to be operated on but for that limited crossing or purpose to get from unrestricted to unrestricted is the way it's set up in this and in the code of Iowa.
Yeah.
So if that's.
Yeah, it's the same, and, and, uh, yeah, I guess you could call it a restricted per se, but, um, if, if the verbiage is such, um, maybe that would, would, uh, make it so you wouldn't have this, this science issue. I don't know, if, if you, if you made it so that the rider, or whatever destination he was going to, utilized a.
Shortest distance.
You know, an aggregate road, to a chip road, to a concrete, whatever, I don't know.
So how do you sign one of those?
Is it, what's that, Nathan?
I don't know.
We, we can't understand it, I don't know what's.
He must be, I don't know, YouTube meeting on a computer and doing it on the phone, but he's getting feedbacks on.
We're getting feedback from you, Nathan, we can't understand you, and you're the only one unmuted.
How do we enforce that, I think is what he said.
Are you asking how we enforce it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think that's my issue, too, it's, it, as I think through the restricted roadway, um, you know, I have concerns about some roads, but again, how do you, how do you enforce it, I'm not really interested in running around the county putting a bunch of signs up. Um, and to the point of a few of the constituents at our meeting, uh, when we talked about this, uh, the roads were concerned about, a lot of us, uh, there's already people using UTVs on them, they're running farm goods up and down the road, and, um, so, you know, we do, ag is not restricted today, you know, this is really talking about non-ag probably, so how much additional use is that gonna drive?
I, I, you know, in my perspective, the view was about the safety of the, of the constituents, to, to look at those views. I mean, if we're already saying, um, some comments from what, um, it says about if we were to make it restrictive, I'm, I'm with you, I'm not looking at wanting to put signs out there, or if we were to make an approval of it and we restrict nothing, and then come back in and see that we're having issues, or lots of concerns, or areas that potentially we have near misses, then maybe we could go back in and review and maybe put restrictions on. I'm open to both sides, I, initially, like you mentioned, the constituents are, are in agreement of looking at no restrictions. I'm only looking at it from the fact that that road does have, you know, several thousand, you know, tra- you know, turns per, you know, that roads per day. We come up with like ten thousand.
Yeah, I think, I think I looked at.
Traffic count.
I looked at from Stewart, from, uh, Industrial Connector down, it was fifty four hundred, I think was the traffic count, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, regardless of.
So it's a pretty significantly traveled road, so, um, I looked at those, and, you know, the, the nine thousand or whatever number it was really from like Oregon to Industrial Connector, you know, right around there, but it, it, it diminishes past Rego's there, but it, it's, it's still heavily trafficked. It's five thousand plus vehicles a day, a day.
One of the, one of.
As I recall, maybe it was thirty five, I, I looked at it.
One of the things that I had reviewed was, and I, I guess I'm maybe common sense type things, but it talks about public ice, um, and means of any frozen waters. Have we, have we, have any wording in there of saying, hey, you, you know, I, this is me thinking out loud, um, probably not gonna wanna run my four wheeler in the middle of a rainstorm, or is that okay?
Well, I think they were talking about bodies of water.
I know, but what I'm saying is this code doesn't really say that, and I didn't see that. And I didn't see that on the other ones. Is that normal? Do we do that? Do we do we say, you know, you don't want them running in the middle of a of a rain? And I guess I think about that as a if somebody's riding a motorcycle, they normally don't. But that does it's not illegal to do that. They just didn't want to see you, you know, sliding down the road into some curve. But if we're really wanting to say, hey, we're wanting to have this open discussion about it, ideally, you know, there's most of those don't have windshield wipers unless it's a UTV. That possibly may be a newer model may have that option.
Well. There's there's so many different uses for this type of tool. We're speaking of uses from just strictly recreational, just to go for a ride, to to ag use, to, you know. I've got I've got friends of mine that are canine trappers. And they would absolutely love to have this as a legal tool for what they do because they will travel miles throughout the countryside. And maybe they've got maybe they've got a half a dozen properties within two or three square miles where they can take and unload their machine and their equipment and they just go. And I can assure you, these guys are running their sets and equipment all the way through into January in any type of weather, any type of anything. And so that's something that that I wouldn't want to want to prohibit these guys from using these tools for what they're doing. Yeah, you see what I'm saying?
I I understand that, but I'm thinking also the daily operator that may want to just go for a joyride, like you mentioned. And and now they're going down, you know, maybe a main a main road and semi traffic can't see it as well because of the rain. And they have windshield wipers and the other one doesn't.
It doesn't appear to be anything in the state code either.
I I just, again, I was just asking those questions because I don't see it. And I just think it out loud, knowing that we, you know, we had a, you know, guy that was on his bike driving to work at where I work. And he got hit by a semi and never made it to work.
Yeah.
And and so I think about those types of things that would be on my conscience of saying, hey, do I make this approval without having at least that conversation?
Sure.
So I understand your perspective, but maybe that maybe they have newer models. Maybe maybe, you know, I would I would be open to say, hey, if you're going to make that, maybe it has a a model that's only has windshield wipers. I don't know. You know? I I guess I'm just thinking out loud.
I think the challenge is you can you're never going to think all the possibilities.
I know, but does that mean that I open it up to everything and still just say I can.
Well, you you've 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 got to put some judgment on the operator. You know, just because you can drive down Stewart Road at three thirty or four o'clock. My question would be, why would you? When there's an alternate route for you, you can still take your machine, but you don't have to run that machine in 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 an area that increases your own personal danger. You see what I'm saying? I mean, it's just like, people have to take some responsibility. I mean.
And I know, I'm just I'm just thinking if it would be if it would be.
People take some responsibility there, to stop.
If it's if it's a is there a value added in saying, you know, recommendations during, you know, a nor- a normal, normal snow, but not, you know, major storms? I don't know. I mean, you would think that would be common sense, but what if somebody says, oh, I got to get home, you know, I got to hurry up. And so I'm trying to hurry up and get there versus me waiting out the storm. I don't know, I'm just thinking. And if it isn't, and if you if I'm the only one that sees that, then I'm fine with it. I'm just telling you my opinion. Most of the times when I get into, you know, and I think about when I fill out some of these accident reports when I was a kid, not now. They'll ask you, you know, what was it raining outside? Was there a storm out there? Did you have good visibility? You know, and and I think that's my my thought process when I see that, when I've filled out those, you know, accidents. And now I think about that, you know, here, I'm going to have a sixteen year old, seventeen year olds now saying, hey, I got a free free chance to go out there. And you know that, you know, deer season coming up, there's going to be people that are going to want to do that. That's fine, I'm not saying that I think most people can navigate through the snow, but I'm just thinking more during the rain. And some of these heavy rains that we've had of ideally probably not being the best to go out and and navigate through those things. That's just my points.
Well, how would you put that in direction?
I would probably say I would like for them to say, you know, normal, normal operations of of the utility vehicles, ATVs. Just not during major rain, you know, occasions or during rainfalls. I mean, I'm not saying that you can't go out when it's sprinkling, but if it's a if it's a major storm, pull over to the side, wait till the storm's out, then operations will go as normal. I mean, most semi drivers do that. But I guess that's my only input in that that way there's some clarity around safe operations.
Well, you know, I think.
Like you said, it's common sense.
People have a convertible, I don't see them all driving in deluges. I mean, people have motorcycles, I don't see them doing that. And and I don't, but I don't know how you would, I don't know how you codify that, that that's just.
I don't know how you legislate that.
I don't either, it's just. You can't.
I don't like, right, I.
I don't know how you'd write anything into an ordinance that would do that. What was that Nathan?
If you think people from the cell, I mean, you could have any of you go out with a car. Personally legal way to be determined operating. So, you know, I I I'm just.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, if I'm the only one that has that opinion, that's fine. I'm just giving you my input on it. Obviously, you're right, if people, we can't control it. But I thought if we had some common sense documentation, like using lunch during evening, to me would be using, you know, some sort of a.
Yeah, yeah.
I like the idea of these restrictions, the better.
Let me throw this out there. Heard golf carts lie in all this conversation. I'm sorry, Jack. I know it's getting late, but I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, I've had that question as well. I've had people say the same thing.
More than once, and that's why I brought it up.
My own opinion would be, I'm my is is purely an opinion, is that if a vehicle is capable of meeting the rules of the road, then I don't have any problem with them being on there. Which means, does it have lights? Does it have taillights? Does it have brake lights? Can it meet the minimum speed requirements? If it doesn't, it must have a slow moving vehicle sign so that you can see it. I mean, we deal with that, you know, on the secondary roads all the time. There are a lot of vehicles that aren't designed for the road that are on our roads all the time. And the folks, our rural taxpayers, our rural road users are used to dealing with that. I think it's probably more when you get closer to the cities on roads that are probably more urban in nature that we would have more risk. But I don't.
Does DNR register golf carts?
No.
There's a state, you can only operate them on highways. And there's a state code that deals with golf carts that says about limited operation on streets that's already in place. So I don't anticipate that was envisioned in three twenty-one I. The golf carts sort of have their own, used to say you had to have a flag and a slow moving vehicle sign and you had to drive your most direct access from home to your golf course and back. But that may have changed in the last twenty years too. But I there there used to be a code section that dealt specifically with golf carts.
Yeah, I see them all the time in my house. And they've got a little flag and the slow moving vehicle driving down the street and going to the golf course.
We could check that, you know, my, not that you're looking for my suggestion. But I think a couple of people designated on the board to sit down with Nancy and I and walk through this. Maybe, you know, what I think what Nancy, the approach she took was to take something from Lynn County, which is pretty exhaustive, as you can see. But there are things, I mean, there's somebody mentioned a levee, you know, we probably need to clarify that because that'll be the next thing. And and so I think there's a variety of things that we can go through and and deal with if you're of a mind to do that. And come back with something that's, you know, if you've got somebody that is okay with no restrictions and somebody that would would like to see some safety restrictions. And those are a couple of people to appoint to to sit down and talk about it and work through it, you know. I don't, it's not a criticism, it's an open conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good, might be a good way forward because we need to get the, you know, it's get it to a document that makes sense. And I think we have, yeah. So do we have some, does that make sense to the board or no or yes? I see some nods, good. So do I have some volunteers to board?
I got a minute.
Scott Scott would volunteer. Anybody else? Santos, Scott and Santos? Okay, so Scott and Santos will get with Jim and Nancy to flush out some of the discussions today on this for a kind of round two of a proposed ordinance. To bring to before the board before we started into the public process. The further pub- pub- public process. Okay. So anything else Nancy?
On this? No. And I don't have any, I don't have any other.
Okay. And how about receive information from county employees? Even county employees need to, Brian?
Good morning. Just bring up the latest information that I have from the coronavirus Iowa dot gov. For Muscatine County, it's probably the information that was sold from Friday afternoon. A lot of times they don't get the information over the weekend until today. For Muscatine County, positive cases, one thousand one hundred and eleven, recovered nine hundred and twenty-six. Unfortunately, we have had one death in the county. Our percentage of positive analysis for our public school districts is six point three. Still the same from last week's meeting. Our long-term care facilities, public cases, forty positive, total recovered, twenty-four. So presently, Simpson Memorial was twenty-two positive, eight recovered. Premier Estates was eighteen positive, sixteen have recovered.
Tell me the total number of deaths now in the counties of fifty-three?
Fifty-five.
Five, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any other county employee have something? Bill? What was that?
I have a question for Brian and Nathan.
Yeah. Go ahead, Nathan.
I figured I have to turn down my speaker, so you hopefully can hear me.
Now we can hear you.
Brian, three pause before you, so I can turn my speaker back up. Do we know how many of those fifty positive COVID-related deaths had COVID as the sole source on the death certificate? Thanks.
I'll have to get that from public health.
Uh, he Nathan, he said he does not have that information available at this time. He will reach out to public health and then we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Bill?
I did want to let you know this morning that last week we were notified by Tyler Technologies that they did have some type of security incident at their facilities. And they are looking into it. They have had contacts from two of their partners that say that they've had some unwanted activities or un. Couldn't clarify what those activities were that were coming in on the Tyler Tech account. Last week when we first made aware of this, we did disable that account, change the user account password and disabled their ability for remote access. Right now, we still don't have a lot of information from Tyler on what happened and what may have been included. But we don't post any services with them. So there shouldn't have been anything infiltrated from us unless they did have access into our systems through their remote capabilities. I did check the logs, there have not been any Tyler accesses using that account since I believe that I said September ninth. So they, we should hopefully be outside that window.
Okay.
I just want to make you aware of that, so if there were questions or if you had seen anything about that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Other county employees? Next item on the agenda is to receive comments from the public, third member of the public here wishing to address the board. I see we have one member here in in the audience, we'll let him go ahead, he's been very patient. Get him to the podium, get your name and address and state your issue.
I'm John Miller. I live on twenty-three oh six Salisbury Road, Mustang. I have some farm ground that borders Salisbury and Keokuk. And with the road being closed, Keokuk being closed, you gated it off a year or better. And it was locked. And so I had to have access to my fields. So I we called the engineer and he said, I told him whenever I needed to get into the field, why he had to come down and unlock the gate. It was fine, worked out just fine. When I got done, I locked the gate back up again. Well, since then, the the padlocks are gone, the chains are gone, the gates are left open. And so if I'd happen to be down there checking things, well, I'd close the gates. I was maintaining some CRP Friday and spraying trees, had product in the sprayer and went to do that field last. I get to the gate and it is chained, locked. Oh, well, that's, I got some tools, I'll take the gate off the hinges. They're padlocked with huge chain. So this, I drove all the way back home, brought generators and grinders and cut the chain off so I could go through the gate. I want to know why there's nothing down there. I'm the only one that has to go down there. I have, there's one field access into mine, nobody else has any business down there. And why it's got to be chained, locked? And why, I I never paying attention because I figured, you know, it it is locked anymore anyway, there's no chains, no nothing. Well, I need a key or something that is very frustrating. I can't get through. I I don't want to know what's, what are they going to do with Keokuk? Are we going to close it, clear off? Are we going to, I don't know. It was okay the way it was. I don't I don't understand why it's got to be chained, locked, the posts, everything. I mean, I've got a huge set of bolt cutters, there wasn't even a chance that I'd try that. But it's too late to call the county, it's this is at five thirty on Friday, and I was very disgusted.
So when you had gone before, it had been unchecked before your previous drivers going in and then just most recently.
Because they keep cutting the chains off. This this must be the fourth time that somebody's cut the chains, stolen the locks.
Why would they cut the chains? There's nobody needs to be down there. This is the first time that I've ever done.
You tell me why they cut the chains while they're stealing the locks? But the gates are there to protect people from driving into a hole.
I understand that.
And you were offered a key.
No.
Yes, you were, yes, you were offered a key when this was first done and you didn't want one. You said you'd call us and we'd come down and unlock it, which is what we did.
You.
Then this is exactly what we did.
When I needed the gate open, you told me to call you. And so I called into the office and they said, oh, you could come in town and get a key. And I said, no, I want the gate unlocked. I'm not going to drive a bunch of gene to get a key.
The foreman, the foreman drove down there and unlocked it.
Mm-hmm, and it worked great, it's fine. I keep the gates closed all the time. I go down there and the gates are open and I close them and and wire them shut. So that I don't want people down in there, that's good for me.
We don't want people down in there because it's not safe.
Yeah.
Beyond your end.
So I I think that the the bottom line is Keokuk has been a, it's it's been an issue that that I think the board understands that we need to make a decision in the direction on Keokuk and what we're going to do down there. We haven't had that discussion. I was going to, we had another neighbor that wanted to discuss and just do some people. We haven't had that discussion, I was gonna, we had another neighbor that wanted to discuss and just do some people missing and things not working right. Uh, we haven't been able to get that on for a discussion, but, uh, I think the board owes the engineer some direction on that. We need to make a decision, you know, about, do we continue to put money into Kiukuk and keep it open? Do we vacate the road and turn it over to the landowners, uh, provide that access, or what is our, uh, next step? Or what, what do we wanna do, uh, to come up with a permanent solution for that road? Because you don't wanna, you know, we just, it's just, it's, it appears to be a constant source of headache for everybody. And I think the best, best course is to figure out what is the right thing to do with that. So any input you have on that, we would appreciate, I think the board would. Uh, what you think the ideal solution down there is, I think is, uh, I haven't gotten down to walk, and I know Scott and Santos both did and, and I, I know Keith has been there, but, you know, it's, it's always a challenge down in that area with roads.
We, I had gone down there, actually went to go look at it last week, Mr. Miller, I, I, I'm in agreement to looking at us vacating the road. Now how we go about that and how that property ties in with you being able to access that, I think that's where, I, I would be interested in hearing your points as well, too.
The field you spray, is that right on the corner? So you have a field access there, do you have to come down around to Salisbury?
I have to go down, uh, the south or down to where the creek goes across. That's by edge of my property line, where it goes across the road. So, and that's the only access I have to get in that field is go clear to that creek and pull in my field. Which, it's, it's not only me, uh, I go down and check that all the time, uh, need to get down there, but I didn't have a problem with it being so the gates were unlocked. I have the ground leased to hunters and a very responsible, very good hunter, he has to have access to go down there. He goes down there and turkey hunt. And he can't get through. And, and he stopped and told me the other day, or I called him and talked to him about it, he says, well, I suppose you could go through the ditch and get around it, the gates. Well, no, there's water in the ditch, I'm not, you know.
Yeah.
And, and if, and if they do decide to close this road, how are they gonna do it? I mean, are they gonna put a, are they gonna just, uh, gate it off or off of Salisbury? Well, I have to have access to it, I just, uh, if they're thinking about closing that road, you know, when the river comes over, it seems like it does every year now. They get a lot of current on Salisbury, I lived there all my life. And the, the river will take Salisbury Road out. But it never bothers Kiukuk very much, it, that's all backwater. And that all backs in and fills in across our property, and then when water comes over Salisbury, um, and, and sometimes it takes, uh, you know, a long time to fix Salisbury. They've been working on it and they're putting, uh, shoulders on it to keep from, from cutting the edge of the road. I'm just thinking that you have two, two accesses right now to get into the park. If you close Kiukuk way, that's the end of it, I mean, for, even for a fire. I'd think it'd be the closest way to come around twenty-two to, to go to the campgrounds for fire or emergency of some sort, it'd be a lot shorter to cut down Kiukuk. You don't have any other way out of there, it's just down Salisbury and I.
And every year that you mention that Salisbury gets flooded, does Kiukuk get flooded as well?
Oh yeah, water goes over Kiukuk, but it doesn't take the road out. Uh, when you have a bad flood down there, it takes Salisbury out, it'll dig holes clear through it, and then it's closed. Whereas Kiukuk, that, that comes in and backs up over it, fills my property up before, um, there isn't a current there, is what I'm saying. But Salisbury, that's, sets high there, and, and when that water finally goes over the top of that, it cuts.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the channel. Or the river.
How long have we had Kiukuk closed?
About a year?
Yeah, it's been over a year, because I was in here, I don't know, like in June last year to get access to go down there. And, and, and that's okay, if you want to lock it up, that's fine. But I want a key, and I want a key for my hunter to go in there in the meantime. I have to have access to it. That's what I'm, I'm questioning.
I think from the comments from, from our engineers, that it may not be, uh, maybe somebody else is cutting these things, because we, hypothetically, let's say you get a key and then somebody comes back still a month from now, maybe wanting, I don't know why they'd do that, but obviously we don't think that you're the one that's cutting it every time, it's just a matter of, or maybe some, some other issue there that somebody else may be trying to access in there as well, too.
I don't, I don't care if it's gated off, it's great, I've been there all my whole life and, and it's a, it used to be a dead end, hidden road and people take stuff down there and dump it, which, good, the gates are crossed, they ain't gonna go down there and dump, no. But I gotta have access, I gotta be able to go through the gate. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
John, where's the, where's your access at, um, I'm assuming you're coming through the, what would be the, what would be the west or the east gate, the, the east hand to Kiukuk, close to Salisbury, would that, would I have to have, got my directions correct, east? Yeah. So, so you're, you're, you're coming, you're, you're coming from your place and you, and you're headed downwards river and you go.
The north.
You turn west on Kiukuk and, and you're going to that first set of gates, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
And, and then you have a, a field entrance beyond those gates, how, how far, how far beyond those gates does that field entrance?
Ah, Ireland.
Probably a good quarter mile for sure, maybe even a half. This long ways down is, is next field entrance.
On the south side. It's actually across, it's actually across where the creek is running now.
No, no, it's right at that creek.
It's right at that creek.
Right at the creek.
North side to the creek.
But I understand, too, you can't move the gates down there. If some drunk comes driving down through there and crashes through the gates, well, he's gonna go and crash, bang. We're, now they're back away, I understand that, but.
I, the gates probably could be.
Yeah. But that, that's the only, that's the only field entrance then that, that I'm aware of, and it goes off the field to the north, am I correct?
Well.
Is that what we're saying?
Kiukuk's north south there, so it goes off to the.
My, yeah, my field would, you'd be turned to the east into the field entrance. But, but then, right now, the people on the other side of the road, where the gates are, there's a driveway there to turn around in. I can't say their name. Anyway, so if you move the gates down there by my property, then now you're creating a, a dead end, a place to dump. And then they'll be in my field, and he's got it all gated off on, on the, right where it is now. So they cannot get in there, it's fenced and gated. Well, if they do that down there, there's no fence, there's no gate, no nothing, and they'll be people up, going around the field. I, and I don't, I, I'm not asking for anything other than a key. That's all I want, where I can get through that gate.
All right, well, I think we, this is a bigger, this is a discussion we need to kind of decide when we're gonna have it and move it and get going. We appreciate you coming in this morning and sharing with us, John. Well, we know we have a decision to make there, we gotta figure something out.
Okay.
All right, thank you much. Do we have anybody on the phones, Bill, anybody indicating?
Somebody on the unit, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have someone on the phones, if you'd like to make a comment, folks? Is there anyone?
I'm not on the phone.
Oh. You're on your computer, is that you, Don?
Hello?
Hello.
Yes. Hello, hey, this is Don Bragton-Frutland. Um, I have two comments that, uh, I heard on the discussion with the HTP UTV, like the rain. And so, uh, we live in Iowa that, uh, those pop-up storms can come up anytime, even for the motorcycle riders and stuff, they don't, don't realize, you know, it might all of a sudden come up and you got a belly laceration when it wasn't even supposed to be raining today, so I'd like to, don't, I like, I don't wanna see a restriction on that part. And like Scott said, it needs to be more on the operator on it. And then you keep, uh, talking about restrictions for Stewart Road and Petticoat. If I wanna go to Deep Lake, I wouldn't be able to go to Deep Lake because I'd be on a restricted, uh, road of both of. So I'd like to see the, no restrictions now and, uh, maybe six months after it goes into effect, see what you had for, uh, uh, if you had any problems with, uh, people and then, uh, uh, do an update and or, uh, go from there.
Okay. Any questions are coming?
And if you need a citizen to be, if you need a citizen to be on that, that committee with Scott and Santos and, uh, the others, I'd be willing. So, that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Hey, Don.
Thanks.
Don, while you're on.
Yep.
Frutland, um, you, you live in Frutland, correct, or close to Frutland?
Correct.
Um, does Frutland have?
I live inside the city limits.
Okay, Frutland has their ATV, UTV, um, ordinance, correct? And does that?
They do not have an ATV.
Okay, so they have a UTV. Um, in their UTV, do they require slow moving vehicle signs on all their vehicles?
Yes. Uh, Frutland City is UTVs and golf carts. You gotta have a flag, you gotta have the, uh, uh, the slow moving vehicle, you gotta have the Frutland City sticker. And, uh, with the UTV, I read, you gotta have that, I gotta register that with the state every year, uh, on that, so I get an updated, uh, DNR sticker, just like my boat. But it's on a yearly basis and not a, a cycle like the boat is.
All right, that's all I had, Don, thank you.
Thanks, Don. Any other members of the public wishing to share? Yep. Bill?
No.
Okay, seeing none, hearing none, meeting is adjourned.